Let's go ahead and get started.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let's call to order the MRMAC Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, November 1st, 2016. Let me begin by reminding everyone to sign in and make sure your microphones are turned on and speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear you. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting will be November 15th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in this room, which is the Matthew Thornton Room. Let's see. Nelson, we'll have you voting for Lynn tonight, so all of us are voting. We have seven members. And with that, the first item on our agenda is our Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Jillian, do you have anything interesting for us?
Yes, we have a regional impact recommendation for the Franklin Savings Bank site plan, which is on the agenda tonight, item number four. And this project proposes the construction of a new bank on a parcel of land adjacent to the convenient MD and St. Joseph's properties on Dobson Way. Staff recommends that this project does not meet the criteria for making a regional impact determination.
Does the board have any discussion about the recommendation about regional impact on Franklin Savings Bank's site? If not, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Nelson, we'll count you as the second for that. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is 7-0-0 to accept the regional impact recommendation. Anything else, Jillian?
That's all.
Are there any questions by members of the board or staff? Seeing none, item three on our agenda is Skipper's Marine Corp. As the applicant and owner, this is reviewed for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to amend a previously approved outdoor boat display and storage yard. The parcel is located at 54 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, TEC map, 2D Lot 29. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from Skip?
Just a few notes. The applicant's proposing to revise the approved site plan that they already have to remove customer parking spaces and replace them with boat storage. Additionally, they're proposing to position boats on both sides of the entrance drive to display them for sale. And while parking within the 50-foot, 50 feet of the Daniel Webster Highway is normally not permitted, they did receive a variance for that purpose on October 26th. Just some notes that this property has been the subject of numerous enforcement actions for site plan violations related to the parking over the last few years, and this is an attempt to amend the site plan to better reflect what is described as the true operational needs. I wanted to also note that the fire department has expressed concern with the proposal, and they're recommending, and it's recommended that the applicant responds to those concerns tonight during the discussion.
Thank you, Jillian. Skip, come on forward. Take a minute to sign in on the clipboard and then make sure the microphone's turned on. Introduce yourself and tell us about your proposal. I heard you fine, but I don't know if it's, no, touch the button, make sure that that light gets really bright.
Okay, yeah, it's on now.
There you go. Great.
Well, yesterday I was down for the count with a fever or flu or something like that. And it seems like I've decided to break my fever right here before all of you, so I apologize if I'm sweating a little bit, but I've been sick for the last two days.
I'm glad you're feeling better. Don't forget to introduce yourself, though.
You might want to wipe down this area after I leave, but the kids always seem to bring something home, don't they?
There you go.
So anyways, with that, basically, I've been running Skipper's Marine for 28 years. I'm located, as you know, at 54 Daniel Webster Highway. Boats were something I built when I first came in there, did a little bit of restoration on small boats, but the economy changed that to boat building disappeared. And now I've revised the business to be working on all kinds of boats, you know, people that live in the area, canoes, all the way up to, you know, 22, 23-foot bowriders, cuddy cabins, and everything in between, jet skis. So they come in all different sizes and shapes. It's like a giant Rubik's Cube in my yard because I don't think my business is like any other business, per se, because cars and trucks can kind of be, you know, sorted and put in certain spots, but I have to operate certain times a year at a little bit of an overcapacity to accommodate people rushing in for, like, the October snowstorm years ago. Seventeen boats arrived unexpectedly to get their blocks drained and to get covered because people were panicking. And I tried to accommodate as many of them as I could, and I try to keep my circle open, the side of the building open, and do what I could to accommodate these rushes. It seems like when these rushes happen is when the level of somebody in town might be like, geez, what's going on down there? You know, is it going to be like this all the time? And typically, most of the time it's not. It's a pretty normal yard with very neat, kept, everything parked in its spot. But I have had to redesign the yard, as you may see in an overhead view or some of the pictures, that I had square parking spots for cars. What I've done is extended the wheels to the edge of the pavement on both sides of the boats. It overhangs the grass a little bit, and I've angled them at like a 45-degree angle to keep the circle open. I'm encroaching maybe three to four feet beyond the white lines of the parking that we used to have. I don't really get customers, per se, other than they bring their boats into the driveway, and I do a valet parking type situation where they come to the top of the driveway, we drop the boat, they sign their paperwork, and they leave. It's not like a place where you go to sit and relax or, you know, go buy something for a while. There might be some small meetings out in the parking lot talking about their needs, and then they go, and then we take our fork truck and put it in the spot that we best seem fit that day based on different sized boats in the yard. It's a complicated thing. And the yard fits my needs perfectly because I, the quality assurance stays up because I don't take on more than I can handle. It's, you know, in the last few years, it's made it so that quality is good, I don't take on more than I can handle, the yard fits my needs perfectly. Obviously, when we run out of space, we can't let anyone in. Occasionally, someone may sneak in, and we've got to try to, you know, get someone out then, you know? I mean, it's not a perfect scenario where you try to schedule so that you don't overfill, but there's inevitably someone that shows up or someone that says they're going to pick up and doesn't pick up, you know? So those things are tough to overcome, and all I can do is manage it as best I can by calling, getting, you know, people to come as quick up as soon as they can. And, you know, sometimes I've got to turn people away if it's overcrowded. That's basically it, but...
So let's start with one, one simple thing. You did forget to say your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Skip is my nickname, and John M. Moir, Jr. is my real name.
Thanks. So the second thing is, I guess you were at the zoning board a couple nights ago?
I was.
And they gave you a variance from the front setback, which is normally a 50-foot required setback. And my understanding is that the zoning board then punted it over to us to decide with the number being somehow less than 50, what should it be? And so what are you proposing or requesting in terms of how much of a setback from the road
Right.
for where the boats would be parked?
Yeah, okay. I have a present, there's a gate which I don't plan on moving. It's swing shut, and I've used that on my site plan revision as a dotted line right there. And I've kind of shaped the storage area, like I have a storage area in the back, now I'm looking for storage area along the sides. And with a buffer behind and, you know, a little bit of encroachment over those white lines to about three to four feet.
So you think the boats will be behind your gate?
Behind the gate, yes. I did ask, you know, and, you know, obviously, a compromise would be nice that if I could display a boat, you know, not too big, obviously, I mean, I don't know how cabin crews are out there, but smaller boats for sale during working hours in the spring and summer would be nice to have a boat outside the gate on the lawn on display for sale. You know, we could bring them in at night if that's an issue.
How far back are the, is the gate from the street?
I want to say about 30 feet.
Okay. The concern that gives rise to the reason for having a setback in the first place is just that people can pull the edge driveway and then see down the road and be able to know when they can pull out and see not blocking the site vision. And not just from your driveway, but from the ones that are around it, from probably, one that most relevant would be the one from the battery place next door.
I have some pictures that I gave to Jill to kind of give you a perspective as you're coming down the road with the boats right up to the gate, like I have it now, and, you know, different angles coming down the road so that you can, you know, the boats do not block any signage. The only thing that blocks signage is the approved trees on my first site plan that block any signage. There's no boats that block any of the signage coming down the road from that direction. I have pictures that I brought to prove that.
Signage is part of it, but being able to see from the cars that are pulling out of a driveway, you'd like to be able to look and see if anybody's coming. I'm looking at this satellite picture, which I guess you probably have a copy of two. Where are there trees on your site?
I do not have a copy of that.
Oh, they're coming around. Your pictures are coming around. I'm sure they'll show me where the trees are.
They're very small trees. You can see them on the right side as you're looking out.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
And there's some, three small trees on the left that, for whatever reason, the leaves aren't showing, but there's about three maples on each side, right around that yellow line area.
Yeah, you can see them.
Do you have that picture, I?
Yeah, okay. But I've got, they're going through right now, so let me take a peek. All right, when did these pictures, when were these taken?
This fall, just in September, the end of September. You can tell by the color of the trees, just recently.
Okay. So that's what your lot, your lot looks like today, more or less?
Exactly. Today, it looks a little worse because I wasn't there, and I know a couple more boats came in, and they're up against the other side of the door. But when I get there in the morning, I'll straighten that out.
Let's see, I'll let the board have some time to discuss and think about it. We'll get some input from the public on the setback from the road issue, but if your fence is 30 feet back from the road, keeping boats behind it is perfectly okay with me. It's, 30 feet is more than enough for a car to be able to see around and see down. I would like to propose or have the board consider a discussion about from where your gate is, if there was some sort of continuation of that, like a fence, like a low picket fence or split rail or something that sort of defined that line so that whether it's the fire department or community development or anybody else, even the neighbors, if the neighbors know that you're allowed to be up to there and not over it, that well, that fence kind of
Sure.
clearly defines that, so, you know?
Should this fence, something like, just to portray a line in an area of confinement?
Yeah, just something to kind of just define it a little bit, so anybody passing by, including anybody who's wondering whether you got too many, can just look there and say, oh, no, he's fine, he's behind his fence. With respect to a boat before the fence, let's just, I don't know where that discussion will go with that.
I don't want the board to think that I've been just doing this on my own for years. In '09, there's a lady named Nancy that worked at community development.
Yep.
And she had given me permission to keep the boats in my yard the way I have it. She did come back one time and said, I'd like them angled a little sharper, which I did. But I, you know, I kind of went on that premise since then, that I was kind of within my rights to do that because I told her the economy had changed my business model. And so, you know, it wasn't just, you know, I did kind of ask and inquire about that.
Okay. Nancy Larson is who you would have spoken to. Do you have any information? Did you, did you get a letter or email or anything from her when you did that?
Notes, I believe.
Were there notes in the file, Jillian, that indicated that?
I'm not aware of them.
I think I might have them here.
If you have them, share them with us because obviously if that's been some, and she was the Planning and Zoning Administrator, so she would have had an authority to make some of those kinds of determinations.
I did make some comments about that. It says right there, but it goes on to states on presumptions that I felt were incorrect.
So this is a letter dated November 17th, 2015, that's addressed to you, and it's captioned, "Does potential site plan violations at Skip Marine?" And the area that you've highlighted says, "Department records contain a memo dated October 1st, 2009 from Nancy Larson indicating that you were granted administrative approval to park boats within the customer parking spaces as long as the limits of each space are not exceeded by a boat or trailer. See attached." And then the rest, the other things on here are your writing. So it may be important for us to figure out if we've got a copy of that October 1, 2009 memo from Nancy Larson. Thank you, Skip, for sharing that with us. So what she was saying is you got to keep the trailers all the way back, and you're saying the trailers kind of stick out the tongue of the trailer a couple feet?
Yeah, and I think that's why I'm here now, you know, to kind of clarify, you know? I mean, she did come back and look, and she saw what I was doing, and, you know, that was the best I could do with what I had. Like I said, they come in all shapes and sizes.
Yeah. It seems like, if her message is that if it fits within the space, it's fine, that would be, I think, a fairly consistent approach because as far as a parking space goes, what you put in it, not my concern, park a boat or park a car, park whatever.
Registered vehicles to some extent, but they, you know, boats don't fit the conformity of these lines that they had for cars on the sides at the time, and like I said, you know?
Yeah, no, I got you. I think that separate from the setback issue where we started, from the fire department's standpoint, they want to make sure that they can get their equipment in there if they ever need to do anything to put your, to help you out if you have a problem. And that's looking for access to getting right up close to the building with some large, their vehicles are big.
Exactly. And John, who is, I think, the safety
Manuelle.
Director Manuel, he did come down, and, you know, we were in the middle of, you know, switching some boats around and working, and he, he said, you know, the most important thing to me is that when you leave at night, that the alleyway on the right of the building is clear, and that I can get around the circle, you know?
When you say he came down, when was that?
It was probably about a month and a half ago, I think, that he came down. And then he came back the next day. I wasn't there. My head mechanic and manager, Marcus, was there. He came in, Marcus had the side clear, everything opened, you know, we were, you know, done our little switch around, and we were going to work. And he says, this looks great. And that's, that's what I expect. And he goes, if you can leave it like that at night when you're not here, that's what I would hope for.
Okay. The staff's recommendation in their memo, and through discussion, is that the planning board help you sort out this question of the setback that the zoning board granted you the variance for and see where we're going to go close to the road. With respect to the other things that you're requesting in terms of putting boats in the vehicle parking spaces or having less parking, I think that they've indicated that we don't necessarily have parking regulations for Marina, and if we use warehouse ones, we could probably figure out a way to make the parking situation okay. And the rest of whatever you would want essentially flows from satisfying the fire department. If they're happy, we're happy, kind of a thing. So I think what the staff has recommended is that we resolve the question about the setback however the board and discussion would see fit, and then continue the application to the future to give you time to go figure out from the fire department. And once you guys are on the same page, it's easy for us to say, yeah, it's great, go with it.
Yeah.
But still more discussion to have. I can't be the only one that talks. Alistair?
But the problem with it, the but I have with what you've just said, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not disagreeing with much of what you said, I don't think the idea of displaying boats for sale, including putting one boats on top of the sewer easement, is a good, in the sewer easement area, is a good idea. I think if Mr. Moore is going to accept your idea of the gates extending some sort of fence either side, north, south, from that to his border, and having nothing in front, then I'm probably going to go along with you. But if you're, if we are giving him the ability to put these boats for sale in front of that fence, then I have to say I'm beginning, because I think you're making it much harder for people to get out of the battery place because there will be hardware in the way.
Yeah, the sight lines are what I'm concerned about. I'm not, not so much the sewer easement because a boat or a jet ski that's mobile can be moved out of the way if somebody needs to come or access the sewer easement. And it's the nature of an easement that you don't own it, you have a right to use it, and the underlying property owner still owns his land and can use it. But the sight distance thing, I get, I get you with, and I'm concerned about that as well. But I guess there's two bits to that question. Is, is the rest of the board comfortable with or have questions about saying that the location of the gate in 30 feet, being 30 feet back from the road and boats being behind it, is that an appropriate layout for the yard? And then question B is, can you then put a boat outside on display on, during the day and not at night, or whatever the parameters might be that we'd consider with that? I would think that we'd tackle those couple of questions separately, but I know that we're also just beginning our discussion. We haven't any public input and all of that stuff either. Tom?
I would suggest that 30 feet behind the gate would probably be okay. He, obviously, is not doing that in the one aerial photo that we have. And that's been a concern since this, since he went into this spot. He's only been there for about 11 years, although you've been in business for 28, you were saying.
Yes, sir.
Ever since he's gone in there, there's been overcrowding of that space. There's been neighbors complaining. There's been these issues that the fire department has reported where he's had more boats and more stuff on his lot than the lot can contain. So I certainly wouldn't want to see anything come beyond that. And I think it's still debatable as to whether or not he can fit, the way he's got his boats in there now, adequately to give safe passage in and around the building. So that, it still leaves him with a lot of concerns, but, I mean, the 30 feet back is probably sufficient.
30 feet's okay. Any other comments or questions? Nelson?
Yeah, I'm pretty much in agreement with what Tom has just said. I think we keep them back 30 feet. We're off the easement, and we provide the sight distance, and I think that's the way to do it. And I would prefer to restrict that front, that front area to be lawn and site space.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. I'm sorry, Vinaika?
Well, I guess the only other issue, how busy are you in the?
I don't think your microphone's on.
Oh, sorry. How much business do you get in the wintertime? Because there is no storage areas, but they look pretty much...
I understand, yeah. And I knew that question might come up, and I appreciate it. We're very slow in the wintertime. There's not a lot of movement in the yard. And the way I store the boats, I use a snow blower. I have to use a giant snow blower to cut my driveway and my entryway. I have a snow plow to do the windrow out in front, but I carve the driveway, and I put the snow in between the boats that are in storage. They're all shrunk wrap, and so the snow goes in between the boats, but they're easily pulled out at any time. I keep the fronts open. But I put the snow between them because they're, they're just sitting there, not, they're not going anywhere. And, you know, that's basically what I've been doing for the last 11 years. I put the snow between the boats, or I direct it into open areas with a snow blower. I don't use a snow plow because it just doesn't make any sense in my yard. I have to be able to access the boats that I work on during the winter. And with a snow blower, I've discovered I can carve just the way I want, like an artist, and be able to get everything in and out the way I need to. That's, you know, that's been the answer for me. So my snow removal is probably a lot different than Shaw's parking lot, you know?
No question. Okay.
I did have another one. You had made a comment earlier about you were not there today, and we had heard a comment about the fire department saying, well, as long as you keep the area around the building clear, it's not a problem. But if we went there tonight, would that be the case, or is there, are there boats?
I honestly would not know.
Right now?
I would not know right now because I came home this afternoon, and I was there for a little bit this morning. It looked fine. Marcus told me that one more boat came in, so I don't know how they left it, because I ended up coming here and getting ready for this, but I, I don't know. You know, the picture and the landscape changes every day. I mean, this picture right here is a, an hour from now, those boats may have been moved someplace else and five people may have picked up. I mean, that's the honest-to-God truth, the landscape changes constantly. And there are going to be times where it may look a little bad, but I say there's going to be a majority of times where it looks fine, you know? It's just the, like I said, it's a, it's a
Well, but the point being is, you don't know what the status is tonight.
I do not, but I will after I leave here.
Understood. But we also know that something could happen while you're sitting in this meeting.
Certainly.
And the fire department needs to be able to do what they need to do, and you're not sure. And that seems to be the ongoing issue with the fire department, is you just have so much volume going on that the space really doesn't meet your needs.
It's, it's really something that only happens two months out of a year.
Yep. And when you have that many boats and people bring them in, and there's gasoline storage in these boats
Sure.
and all sorts of things, you know, the whole idea is to be, you know, safety is important year-round, all times.
Absolutely. I mean, I'm a rescue captain, I know all about safety, and I have a 28-year record of no fires and no issues.
Right.
You made a statement about neighbors complaining. I don't know of any neighbors complaining except for one. And on top of that, you know, safety is my first concern. And the fire department, as I said, they came at a time that things were busy. They came back the next day. They told me they'd be back in two weeks. They came back the next day. Everything was fine.
Okay.
It was a surprise visit. And like I said, there are times when we will be pulling boats out, setting them for a minute, moving some stuff in, maybe somebody goes to lunch. But, I mean, if you look at that circle, I have overhead doors all the way around this building, 14 by 14 doors. You know, I'd say that if they had to fight a fire at my building, it would be a tough fire because of boats, but at the same time, it would be fairly good access to anywhere in the building because I have giant doors all the way around. It's not like they can't get into the building or they can't get access. I mean, there's so many attack points to this building that, you know, I don't think that's, really should be an issue. If I was a fireman, I would not find that to be an issue.
Well, with that, with the fire issues, I think that the staff's recommendation makes a whole lot of sense in that you've got some expertise because of the rescue work that you've done, but we don't. And so satisfy the fire department, and when they come and say that, that we've got this situation worked out, and this is what Skip's going to do, and we think that that's great.
Yep.
We won't have any problem agreeing with it.
Sure.
But the question, the step after that is that whatever that is that you've worked out with the fire department has to be the case 24/7, 365.
Sure, right.
And if the extra boat shows up and you can't figure out how to have that boat on your site and still comply with what you agree with with the fire department, that boat can't be there.
Mm-hmm.
So, and that's why it's important to figure out what, what works for you and what works with the fire department. Our, my personal expertise is so shallow in that area that I'd end up restricting you more than would make sense because I don't know enough about it.
I believe I have a very good relationship with the fire department. I work on all their boats.
They're good, they're good folks. I mean, they're
Yeah, I work on all their boats. When they needed pumps to bail out all the sunken houses, I had all the water pumps they needed.
I don't, I don't think they're going to bust your chops. I think they'll come up with something reasonable.
I have a very good relationship with them. And the last time John came, I felt that, you know, we were on the same page, and we understand what he wants. He wants the circle open, and he wants the path on the right side of the building at night clear. And we can get verification on that and do that for him. You know, can I, you know, is once in a great while, something going to get put someplace that I can't catch and that I'll make correction on as soon as I find out about it? Absolutely. But, you know, I mean, we're not going to put a security guard there.
Yeah, obviously, of course. I mean, if somebody pulls into your yard with a truck and a trailer behind it and a boat, they're going to stop in the circle and do business with you, and then you've got to put the boat away. But when you go home at night, the steady state is that all the boats are in
Absolutely.
a place.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, it's my building. I don't want it to burn down. I want to take good care of it, and I want to run a safe business like I always have, and try to accommodate all the public, fit their needs, and also try to fit the town's needs, you know? It's a fine line that I have to walk.
If it, if it's ultimately the board's decision tonight to deal with the front row, the street setback, and then have you meet with the fire department and really come up with something that we can document in terms of the description about what, and I get what you're saying, the side of the building clear and that sort of stuff, but even the, the width of the driveway that needs to remain clear from, you know, the boats that are in the center island versus the boats that are on the side, they'll have a number in mind, and I don't know whether it's 12 feet or 22 feet, but they'll, and then once you have it, you document it, and that's the rule.
The circle was designed for a tractor-trailer truck to drive all the way around. That was, that's what it was designed for originally. So, and I don't have any tractor-trailer trucks coming through there, but I've never had a problem getting a boat all the way around there either.
It seems to me, I'm not an expert on truck movements either, that's why I always have the engineers and designers show us those things. But I can see conditions like in this, the satellite picture.
Yeah.
One, one side of the loop has got a boat in it, and then there's a boat in the loop between your building and the center island. And when those two things are in place, it could be hard to get a truck around there.
It does, absolutely. And I don't know when this picture was taken, and, you know, I would have to say that it's the luck of the draw. It's probably not one of the better pictures, and I'm sure there's many other days that it would have looked much better. And that, like I said, that may have been a momentary picture that changed within an hour of that.
Yeah, no question, no question. So let's, oh, sorry.
I'd like to address one more issue here.
Please go ahead.
On the original site plan, Skip, I'm assuming that you were part of this whole process when you originally
Yes.
did the approval.
Yes.
And you showed only boat storage in the rear of the facility.
Correct.
And things, obviously, businesses gotten very good for you, and
No, it changed.
Again, all right, so it changed.
Because I used to build boats.
Right, okay.
And that was a different type of operation back in '04. And then the economy hit, and building of boats went away.
Okay. So I guess my question is, where the boats are parked on the side of each lot?
Yes.
Along, was that originally the parking, designated customer parking areas?
It was.
Okay. Because I, I'm looking at the plan that was approved, and I'm having a hard time. I, I mean, I see three spaces, and I, and I don't know what I'm missing here. I see an area that's 18 feet, but it doesn't really say that it was designated initially for customer parking.
I think the number four in a circle on both sides indicates four cars parallel parked.
Okay, so it was basically unpaved area?
It was paved.
But they're not delineated. There's no line delineation, no delineation.
Parallel parking.
Right. Oh, that was for parallel parking? I guess. I don't know. Okay, so that was my question. So that's the area that you've added the storage to, and that was the designated parking. And I can, I can understand where the customer, you know, you don't have that many customers that come in at once typically.
No.
You know, they're not sitting there buying things from you.
There's occasional drop-ins, ask questions, but do you have my revision to my?
I think we do, but we have some questions about that, because it looks like there's a bunch of areas where you've said that boat storage would be. And it's kind of, it looks like they're taking over labels that used to be there to mark something else, and so it's not really clear.
Yeah, it was customer parking, and so I went over that and, you know, changed that from customer parking to boat storage.
So, and I guess that that's what that two thousand and nine memo dealt with with Nancy, where she said, you know, as long as you can keep it within the lines of those parking spaces, then you can angle the boats and put them in there.
Right.
So I was asking for a little bit more room there.
Now or then?
Now. That's, I made some dotted lines depicting, and I did a lot of measurements, and put some buffers in there.
So the dotted lines on here are new?
Can I step up there for a minute, kind of point it to you?
Yeah, please, but then we've got to get back to the microphone, so anybody can hear whatever you said.
And you got to show everybody on the board.
Yes.
Please.
Those dotted lines right there, see that dotted line right there?
Yes.
That's kind of where the back, where the IOs would be.
Okay.
And then I came down and I moved the lines out just a little bit, just there.
Okay.
And I did that on both sides, there are little dotted lines there, took the place of the parking lines.
Alex, here, hold your pen for a second, let me mark that and we'll pass it around.
Pretty much the same type of dotted lines.
Please do.
The storage area in the back depicts dotted lines, so I use the same scripture or format on the storage area in the front, on both sides.
Okay. Pass this around a little bit. I've drawn in pen a rectangle around what he's proposing to use as storage areas, and they are essentially where the boats are today, although I think that he's coming out a little bit further into the circle than the original parking spaces were.
Are you paving?
Yeah.
Are you proposing paving for this extra area?
No, it's pretty much all paved, except for about three boats on either side inside the gate where there's grass.
So you mentioned before that you're backing the trailers in so that the wheels are staying on the pavement and boat, and IOs hanging out the edge?
But where the gate is, where it opens, and, you know, like I said, my best guess is that's about thirty feet back. I made dotted lines either side of that gate that I just showed you, encompassing the grass where the boats are parked now. I've got like two or three boats on the grass, inside the gate, inside the gate.
So that grass kind of curves out a little bit?
Correct.
I got you. I got you. I don't know what point the board wants to either ask more questions or hear from the public.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask one other thing, and I've just noticed, and I perhaps should have seen it before. There's this proposed cross-access easement on both sides.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
What the heck are those? Because there's not, there's not much access, looking at the pictures, and from what you said. What were those cross-access easements for?
I believe I was told back then, in case like a McDonald's or a Dunkin' Donuts went in next door, something of that degree, that they might want that type of access.
Yeah.
That's what I was told.
That's what it was, yeah.
Okay.
I know you were there.
I was. He's correct.
Proposed cross-access agreement.
Oh, yeah, 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 this is, I don't know how much Merrimack has really kind of pursued this very much, but a lot of other towns do. They require neighboring business to have one or a limited number of accesses off the highway, and then you drive sideways between sites to get them.
I know the principle, but, I mean, there's no, what would happen, what, just answer me one question. What would happen if somebody said, I want, I want that access easement? You couldn't cope with it, could you?
Well, I know that on the right side of me, there's a giant drainage ditch there that pretty much puts that to sleep as far as an access area on the site plan next to me. There's a big drainage ditch there now for drainage, so you'd have to go through that drainage ditch to make an access now. On the other side is a residential area, so you're right in that respect on that side.
All right, I just asked, because I saw it.
Yeah, the time when that would have come into play would have been when we reviewed the initial construction of the battery place, and if that became a multi-use driveway at that point.
I just, I just asked the question, Mr. Chairman, just tied up in my brain.
Well, it's a, it's a good question, asked not only for clarification, but this may be the opportune point to eliminate those from the.
That's what I have, that's where I was going next.
Since they don't have any legs.
I think they should come off the plant.
I don't see any benefit in doing that. Why not leave them there?
Because you're giving him permission to park boats there, and it's not going to be able to be used for both of those things simultaneously?
If you're allowing him to go up to the fence, it's no cross-access easement.
This is lined us all the way up to that.
Well, the thinking at that time was, as you suggested, Mr. Chairman, that in the future, these small lots might consolidate their entrances, if, depending upon what gets developed there, that was the thinking.
Yeah, and, you know, you see that all over, Salem's full of those things, London Darius too. Anyway, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. Are there other comments or questions for the applicant, or we want to hear from the public? Public? Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in and offer the board some information? Come on forward. You don't mind sharing the table with Skip, huh?
Honestly, no, I don't, but if you're sick.
Oh, all right, all right, yeah.
I'll pack away. I'll pack away. I'm going to stay away anyway. I have a, my son is going through fighting leukemia, and I don't want to.
No, that makes all the sense in the world.
Of course.
I think if you break your fever, you're over it, but.
Yeah, that's okay, I don't mind you, I don't mind you being extra cautious. But do, after you get a chance, sign in on the clipboard, so we know who you are.
Is it on?
I think it is, yes.
Okay. John Seer, Interstate Battery, next door. I missed the variance meeting because of my son, I was at the hospital.
Sorry.
So, the big thing for me here is the safety side of things. And Skip, I don't care if you park boats out to that gate, but there's been a lot of times when the boats have been out to the sidewalk, okay? And if you pull to the stop line on my site plan, you cannot see at all. You have to pull out to the breakdown lane in order to be able to see, have a line of sight from my place. So maybe some of that, those trees that are there, if those were cut and cleared, that might help that problem. The other side to the safety there is, there's that lane closure there that comes down there, right there, from two lanes to one. And I don't have to tell you, people, you know, the speed limit's forty, but they're not going forty, okay? And there's tractor-trailer trucks parked on the side in the breakdown lane for Dunkin' Donuts. So being able to see there is a real challenge, whether it's to the right or to the left. But when there's boats out there on that grass area and right up to the sidewalk that he's had them before, now I understand you don't have them there right now, but any boats out there, to me, is an absolute no. And second, those trees have got to go. Because, I mean, if you were sitting in, sometimes I can't even see, and I'm in a F-350, three feet off the ground in my seat, and I still can't see, due to boats and trees. So as far as I'm concerned, that would be a definite no on that site plan. As far as the rest of this stuff with the fire department and all that, Skip, you can work that out with them. I know how hard it is to run a business, and site, and room constraints and everything. That's why we moved from Columbia Circle down to where we are. But that still doesn't take away from the fact that people come in and tell me all the time, I went right by this place, I couldn't see it, because there's boats in the way. You know what I mean? So I worry about people jamming on their brakes because they're there at the last minute. There's the lane closure that's coming down. I mean, I've had it myself where people have almost hit me when I'm pulling into work every morning, you know? So those are the concerns that I have. It's basically safety and making sure that we can find the best solution to that.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Fire away.
That you, that's kind of not the best question to ask off the top of your head, but do you know how far you are back from the road when you hit the stop bar on your site?
If I had to guess from the breakdown lane, maybe five, six feet?
Okay.
But I mean, well, let me rephrase that. Five or six feet to the, to the line. Now you're sitting in your car, and you're back even, you know, you've got five feet of hood.
Yeah.
You know, so you're a distance back.
So when I looked at these pictures that went by the first time, I was remembering the trees as being at least maybe young trees, but intended to grow tall and be where their branches are going to be above your sightline. But they're not there yet, or is the?
Well, they're there.
Are the, I mean, they're not high enough to be where the branches are above your sightline, or?
No.
Are they full grown trees? Oh, I see, you've got a whole clump of them right there.
I mean, those trees might be twenty-five feet tall or whatnot, but the bushes and everything else that are there make it impossible.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying. I do, okay. I don't have any other questions for you. Thank you for answering mine. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions? Nope, thank you. Anybody else wish to weigh in, or offer the board something to consider? You always get a chance, you're the applicant. Any members of the public? With that, we'll close the public hearing, and Skip, you can come back up to the table. Other comments or questions for Skip? So it looks like, from the pictures that you've provided, there's this clump of trees which may ultimately grow a little taller, but they're not tall yet. And then there's some low brush kind of in between them and around them that is really right up on your neighbor's property line, and it more, probably more than boats, is getting, is a constant block of the view going to, looking north from the Interstate Battery site. What are your thoughts on that?
The bushes you're seeing there are right by the telephone pole, and they're on the other side of the telephone pole, which I believe is his property, he's more than welcome to cut those down. It's not on my area, it's just right on that, right by that telephone pole, just the other side. Now, the three trees that you're seeing in that picture that I show coming down the road where you can see my boats inside the gate, and you see those trees, I think if you look on my landscaping site plan from way back when, they asked for three maple trees to be planted right in a row there on both sides. And so that's what I, I did. And the bushes that are kind of blocking the view at that telephone pole, are, you know, those are just bushes that have grown up from.
It's the trees.
You know, I'm more than happy to go cut them down, I mean, but I think they're right on the, right on the boundary and kind of a little leaning towards the other side of the telephone pole, when they are an obstruction, I can see where that would be a problem.
I don't know, I'm not spotting trees on the site plan, but they may be written in a note.
Yeah.
In the landscaping site plan, is there?
Oh, there may be a different page for landscaping, I haven't had that.
There is.
Okay.
There was originally a set of giant pine trees between John and I that ran the whole length of the property. And it was all wooded, and, you know, when John came in, he asked if I would object to having all those trees taken down, which really opened it up a great deal, and I approved that, and I said, you know, best wishes on that. There was also a stockade fence between us, and I also allowed that to be taken down to open it up between us and make our businesses look more complimentary. I mean, they're, they're really complimentary businesses, boats and batteries, and, you know, I'm next to the battery place, I'm next to the boat place. As far as people going down the road and not being able to see John's place, well, I have the same problem. It's such, my property's so narrow, people drive by me all the time and say to me, where are you again? I drive by there all the time, I've never seen you. And I think a lot of that has to do with the converging traffic and whatever else. It's just, you know, it's a couple of small lots, you see Dunkin' Donuts, you see the car place up ahead, it's easy to miss.
I get that. Do you and Mr. Seer work together well enough to be able to deal with this trees on the border where you cut yours and he cuts his, and whatever it is you guys can work out?
I've been a dealer for John for twenty-five years. I sell his batteries, we have a great relationship. This is the only issue we've ever had, and, you know, we've been working it out, and I think we're both taking the high road since then, right, John?
It seems to me that those, those particular trees, more than anything else that you've got going on, at least in these pictures, is what's causing him the ability to, where his building is hidden, his sign is hidden, and then when you're in his site and you're trying to get back out again, you can't see up the road.
I have no issue with taking down all those maples on both sides, and just leaving it all grass and open it up there. I mean, I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I mean, whether it's all or some, or you guys can sort out which ones are the important ones. I mean, I'm no fan of cutting down trees just for the heck of it.
Yeah, I mean, I could trim them up, like you said, and try to, you know, you know, make them a little bit more bushy at the top, and trim some of the branches down below.
Yeah, or to dig them up.
You know, this time of year, you're not going to have any leaves on them anyways, but, you know, come springtime and sure through the summer, it, you know, we could do something there to make those look better, and maybe, you know, as I got a good angle on the shots coming down the road, and you can see a sign, I could, you know, remove some of those branches using the same method.
That makes sense to me, in terms of a potential resolution for that. I'm sorry, I stopped these things from going around. Do these need to keep making their way around the thing here? I know you had them first, but now that we've had some discussion about them.
I would like to say one more thing if I could.
Yeah, please.
During the poor economy, a lot of people dropped boats off that never got picked up. And they are a tough thing to get rid of, all right? And if you've talked to the Merrimack dump, you will know, and I'm one of their favorite people, because they like to do a demolition derby on an occasional boat that I bring by there, they think that's fun. They'll say, when are you bringing us another junk boat? Because they love destroying them. It's like I said, like a demolition derby. You know, and I have been making, and I have more spaces to gain, and I try to get rid of about one a month, and I've still got about three more to go. And I've done an amazing job of cleaning up my yard in the last two months, which I was having some banking issues at one time. And, you know, when you're not sure if you're going to stay in business, you tend to not spend a lot of money on things that you may not keep. And so luckily, I did get refinanced, I'm back on track, and I've been spending a lot of time cleaning up the yard, getting rid of the old boats, making more space, because I know how it should look. I know how I want it to look, and I do want it to be safe and open to the public and open to the fire department. I'm almost there, and if you can bear with me, I will get it the way the town would like to see it. And it's the way I want to see it too, so I don't know if that adds any thing, but I just want to know that, you know, I'm all about working with the fire department and getting it to where they need to be, but, you know, sometimes things happen, it takes a while to clean up.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I mean, I get what it's like to be in business, and you and I know each other, our kids play together. I'm not here to bust your chops, I'm just trying to resolve the question about the setback from the.
I don't know you from all in the wall.
I want to resolve the question the zoning board put before us with the setback and get the fire department to be happy, and other than that, I say do what you want. I think that your neighbor with the battery place makes a good point in terms of if there were boats in front of the gate, especially on that side, they'd block his view. I think that it may be a potential answer to say that the other side of your driveway wouldn't block his view. But I don't know if the board, the rest of the board would agree to that, and I don't know whether that would satisfy, you know, help you out at all, but.
I think if you look in the picture, you'll see that, you know, there is room for a boat to be on display there. And, you know, it's like signage in a way, and it is a narrow lot, and people do go whizzing by. And so by having something a little closer with a sales sign, it kind of catches people's eyes. Maybe that's not a good thing, and if I can't have that, I can live with that. But yes, it is a nice thing to be able to display a boat out there on the road so people can see it, so you can possibly sell it, you know?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. I mean, obviously, you want, you want to check your customers.
The other side is probably not appropriate.
I mean, I don't know if there's support for that among the board members to say the other side. The neighbor to the other side's driveway isn't very close to that, and if they were looking south, they're looking at traffic coming from the other direction, and they're not looking close to the edge. But, I don't know, whatever the, whatever the board thinks that they want to do. Let's resolve, first of all, this question of the thirty-foot back fence, and would you be okay doing a little split rail fence or something that continues the edge of that fence to the line?
Yeah, it continues the gate that closes, there's no fence along, it's just a couple of metal poles and a gate.
Right.
And from that two-post metal gate, I would extend some type of picket fencing or something, just to kind of depict some boundaries. I would be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, okay. Is that a solution the board's willing to go with? Yes, sir, motion to that effect.
Well, I will move that we require a fence extending the gate to the property line, both north and south, of the, pick a, design suitable to the applicant. I'm not particular about what it is, it could be a good-looking, a split-rail fence, or something of that nature.
Oh, go ahead, I mean, you're in the middle of a motion, I shouldn't make the comments out there.
No, this, and further, and further, that there be no parking in the area, no parking of boats in the area in front of the gate.
Vinnie? This is an amendment, I don't know if we have to accept it for complete, do we?
We have to, we have to waive full site plan review, I think.
Yeah, that we do.
I think maybe that's my first motion.
It's, we waive full site plan review, but it is to amend a previously approved plan, so.
Okay, well, let's just go through the process, it won't hurt us. What's the will of the board with respect to determining that the proposal is complete?
Okay, so moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, seconded by Desiree, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstaining? So that is six, one, zero with Mike opposed. What is the will of the board with respect to waiving full site plan review?
Okay, so moved, Mr. Chairman. Moved to waive full site plan review, yeah.
Moved to waive full site plan review, seconded by anybody? Seconded by Vinnie, any discussion?
I'd like to, as, as we, to make sure when we're waiving full site plan review, that we're going to have the marked-up version of what that we're going to have the marked-up version of what it is we're discussing on file at the end of this, as a part of this application, like whatever is approved by the fire department, that that's on file.
Yes.
I wanna make sure we're not waiving that away.
My understanding on our usual procedure is that kind of thing is ultimately incorporated into a final motion, where although we waive full site plan review, we do explain what we're requiring of the applicant, and it can be a marked-up plan, or, or fully engineered plan, or whatever.
Whatever's required would be on a final plan that would then be signed. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
My concern is that there's, just the business has changed, and that the site plan really doesn't fit the use anymore. There's no program around, the boats are gonna be arranged, the traffic flow has changed. So to me, waiving full site plan review doesn't make sense, I think that there's too much that needs to be done, especially if we're gonna talk about changing the, the easement, and so I think that it'd be better to do that more formally.
Okay. Any other comments on waiving full site plan review? Seeing, Nelson's motion, did you resume the second? Did I call for a second for your motion? Yes, Vinnie got it, Vinnie seconded that. Okay. If there's no other discussion on waiving full site plan review, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Two opposed, any abstaining? So that is a pass vote, 5-2-0 with Mike and Tom Koenig opposed. And so that waives full site plan review. Now, let's get to this question of the gate and the extensions and all of that bit. Nelson, you wanna try a motion on that?
Try again, I would, would, I would move that we approve a 30-foot setback for the, in, on the front setback, with a provision that a fence be created between the edges of the gate and the property line, both north, going both north and south, and no parking of boats in the area in front of the, between the gate and fence and the highway.
Before I call for a second, can I offer a friendly amendment?
Sure.
The applicant has suggested that his existing gate is 30 feet, but we don't know that precisely. Can we establish that the location of the existing gate is the line? If it happens to be 28 or 31 or whatever?
I'd prefer to stay with 30 feet, Mr. Chairman.
That would require him to destroy his existing gate and move it if it happens to be a couple of feet off the 30-foot line.
I don't know where the gate is, okay?
I don't either, and that's the point.
And I know where it should be, and, basically where it should be.
Isn't there a scale on the planning amount there that...
Well, yeah, but where did you put it when you actually built it out there, is the question, I think.
Yeah, I was on the site plan, even the gate.
Yes.
The gate is here, I don't know, I can spot a dimension that shows me how far that is.
Is the gate in the field the way it's shown on the site plan?
I believe it is.
Well, I'd like to believe that, too.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I...
That's why I said it the way I said it.
Yeah. Where, where does that 50, where does that, you know, where does that 50-foot point start? Does it start in the middle of the road of Daniel Webster?
Property line. Your property.
Okay. I, I'm not sure where my property line starts and the town's property starts as far as the road goes.
It shows right here on the site plan. And it shows, if you were to scale it, it looks like it's about 25 feet or so.
And it's not from the edge of road? From where you perceive the edge of the road?
No, it's from the property line.
There's, there's a right-of-way there where you're funneling into your driveway?
Sure.
That's still town property.
Gotcha.
And then at some point, there is a property line, and then that's the point where 30 feet would then be projected in.
Well, my, my, that was an approximation based on my lack of knowledge, so I, you know, I...
It is 30 feet, you're quite right, Nelson.
Yeah, so if you're basing your 30-foot on the edge of road...
If you scale it off the draw, it's not 30.
Right. You're gonna be further back into your lot than you're expecting.
22 foot, I would say.
Okay, so Nelson's motion is very specific, and he doesn't want to make the amendment, so he wants to require that the fence and line be located at 30 feet from the edge of the property line. Is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Mike. I can't support the motion without knowing more information, because if you're requiring the guy to tear down his fence when the neighbors say it's fine, and clearly it's fine on the pictures, I can't, I can't go there with you. I think that it is important that the thing be built according to the site plan, I would say that the applicant ought to go measure it, and if it happens to be a little bit different, then he's gotta revise that on his plan, but I think that everybody that's involved in this has no objection to it being where it is, where that fence is, and I don't wanna take an action that would make him change that. But, I have one vote.
I mean, the gate served other purposes, too, I mean, it's the entryway, you know? Why would you change the gate and, and the location of the entryway, as far as stopping people from coming in and going out and...
And you may not have to, I mean, it may be exactly where it's supposed to be.
Sure.
I don't know that it isn't, but I don't wanna make a decision that says 30 feet, and then you go out there and you measure it and it's 29 or 31, and you gotta go doing something with a gate that's been there for a dozen years and nobody has any problem with.
The purpose of the gate being so far in is so that a tractor-trailer or some heavy vehicle could pull completely off the road...
Right.
...without it sticking out into, so that's the purpose of that distance. So if it's not to scale or not built correctly, then that poses the challenge for, for safety issues.
Yeah, good, good. So, any other discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, as Nelson framed it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Two, three, four, five.
So that motion fails 2 to 5.
Can I try again?
Yes, please, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to, where the existing gate is, to extend the fence to the property lines, wherever that gate is, that that'll be the setback.
Okay.
Again, with no parking in front of the fence.
And then, if I could offer friendly amendment to that, we'd ask the applicant, it's a condition to go measure it and put it on his plan, whatever it happens to be.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
That'd be okay.
All right, is there a second for that motion? Desiree seconds that motion, is there a discussion about that?
I have, I...
Vinnie?
We're doing this to help the zoning board adjustment determine that...
No, no, we're not trying to help them, you gotta turn your microphone on, first of all. Thank you.
Well, they, they had turned, they went to, they asked us to determine what was the distance that would be most appropriate.
Now, they've granted him relief from the 50-foot setback, and if we don't put another number on it, he can go to the edge of pavement.
But they, but they've asked us to make that number, no.
What's that? What's that?
All right. So the zoning, the zoning board has said he can go all the way to the street.
They, they gave him a variance from the 50-foot setback, and so for him, right now, there is zero setback.
They gave him a variance from the 50-foot, but they didn't put any number in its place.
Correct, and I wish they hadn't have done that.
I, no. Well, so, so my question here is, is can we invoke some sort of, can we invoke a, a distance, you know, say, hey, this is what the distance is gonna be, because now we're going against what the zoning board has granted him relief for.
My understanding is that the zoning board's instructions were that the applicant get an answer from us.
Okay, so that's exactly what I said.
Yes.
Can I?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, Skip, if you can shed some light on this.
I don't only, I don't only own a business in town, I, I live in town like the rest of you, and, you know, I love Merrimack, and it's been a great town for me and my kids. But at the same time, I, I think that, you know, there's fairness in the use of a business and the way businesses are set up, and I'm, I'm curious about a lot of the other businesses along Daniel Webster Highway, for instance, the Subaru, Sunnyside Accura at one time, up on the right, near Bond Bonds, that is a newer building, I believe, than my building, and their cars are just the other side of the sidewalk. Now, I know that's a narrow lot, but I mean, you know, you're pushing me all that way back, why do they, are they able to have their cars just the other side of a sidewalk where, you know, my situation seems to be such a, you know, problem?
I can tell you that there are answers to those questions, but I don't know the answer for that specific question off the top of my head with Sunnyside Accura. I would guess that that's commercial and you're industrial, so there's a different setback that applies in those two zones.
Gotcha.
But I don't know that for sure, they may be in, they may actually have a lot that, because some of those over there are split, half on commercial, half on industrial zone. But it could be that it's a difference between a commercial-industrial, it could be, depending on the age of the building, it could be because the applicant was granted some relief from the zoning board. So there's a lot of ways that things can come to exist the way that they are, and you could follow that previous person's path as well, unless they are there by grandfather, but, you know, if they got relief from the zoning board that gave them up to 5 feet, you know, the relief the zoning board gave you is kind of open-ended and said, "Go see us," so that's...
Well, I, I think it's great that they got it, I think that's wonderful, I think they should have it, I just, you know, it just seems, you know, and I'm naive, because I've learned a lot since the first time I came here many years ago, and I'm still learning, obviously, and, but, you know, someone that looks at these businesses and says, "Oh, I think I'd like to be part of this community and part of these businesses," and look the way they have it, I'd like to kind of mirror that and make my business as successful as theirs by having those same, you know, opportunities and closeness and being able to see my boats, and so on and so forth, so, you know, forgive me for thinking those things, and I understand that we have to fit within the realm of what your rules are, but you can understand why sometimes it makes you wanna scratch your head.
No question, you're not the first applicant to come forward and say, "Hey, you know, it seems like I'm not being treated the same as the guy next to me," and e- each time, and that's why I sort of offered it up from the beginning, in saying, there is an explanation for each one of those individualities, I just don't know what they are off the top of my head. Jillian could probably sit down with the records and you could look at any lot and she'll point out...
There's no need for that.
...what the situation's about.
Like I said, it just makes you sometimes question, you know, why this is a problem, you know? But, I understand, you know, I don't need to open that door, but...
No, no, I mean, it's a fair question to ask. A lot of it has to do with the fact that the town has different zones for different kinds of businesses, different kind of commercial zones, different kind of industrial zones, different kind of residential zones. And sometimes in a residential zone, you gotta have a big lot because you got poor soils, and sometimes you can do a smaller thing, and, and it isn't always readily apparent as you drive down the road to say, well, what's the difference between that and there? But there is ultimately a master plan for the town that explains all of that stuff.
And I thought A1 industry was almost like, the one that you could do more in than almost any place, like those giant tanks across the way from me that looked pretty dangerous, but I had no objection to that.
You can do, you know, heavy industrial work in, in, in the industrial zone, but it also has the greatest, largest setbacks...
Sure.
...from the road, and it's got some other limitations and things. That's why, you know, a site like Budweiser, that's why their building is, you know, not because of a setback, but that's why their building is way, way far from this road, because there's huge setbacks in the industrial zone.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I... I just looked at the variance that was granted, and basically what there's, what they're asking us is to approve the site plan with that variance in place. So, this is kind of awkward for me, because they've given him permission to do something, and now we're kind of trying to say, well, this is what you can do, he can do whatever the variance is granted. Getting site plan approval, if we deny the site plan approval, then the variance really doesn't, doesn't really apply. That's why I'm having a problem. It's kind of like two boards, you know, one is supposed to grant relief from the zoning ordinances, and, but how they can, it's kind of like this sort of one, kind of backwards, I don't, I don't know how this, how this is gonna play out, and I'm really having a hard time, even at this point, voting in favor or...
Sure.
Or, or opposed to this.
I see what you're saying in terms of there being this kind of procedural oddity where the zoning board has granted a variance, but for no particular distance...
Oh, it's 50, well, 50 feet.
No, but normally when you'd come up with a variance, you'd say, "I wanna build my swimming pool 22 feet from the sideline, and therefore, can I do that?", and they say, "Yeah, that sounds good to me." And in this case, they've sent the applicant to us to say, "Get a site plan approval, but your site plan approval can include something less than a 50-foot setback." I'm not sure that I love the condition, the, the choice that's before us, but it is what it is, and the applicant deserves some, some finality to his proposal, so chew on it the way you got it.
Okay.
Mike?
Just taking a look at the site plan, there's about a 11-foot distance between, 13-foot distance between the edge of the road and the property boundary. So anything from that distance would be minus the 13 feet.
Anything minus that distance would be what? Oh, I see.
So if we're gonna give him a 30-foot setback from that edge of road...
You know, it's from edge of property. Right.
It's always been from edge of property, and it's no longer 30 feet, it's where the fence is, in the latest motion that I made.
In the latest motion, which we...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first motion failed, so now we're at where the fence is, it is, and we're just gonna extend with this, with a, another fence in north and south to the property lines, parallel to that, and we're not gonna allow any parking in front of that on the grass.
So, and I think that it's...
If this motion passes.
Yeah.
It still hasn't voted, right?
Right, no, we haven't voted on that. Vinnie was still commenting on that, but now that I'm looking at the site plan a little bit closer, you can see the existing sewer line runs 20 feet from the property line and is almost at the fence, so in essence, this setback is gonna be something like 23, 24 feet.
Right, the existing fence is about 22 feet, according to the scale, if it's built to plan.
And, and 35 feet from the edge of pavement, which is really what you care about with site distances, so... Anyway, is there further discussion on the motion on the floor? And it was made by Nelson, seconded by Desiree, to allow the applicant to extend his fence from the existing gate out to the property line, north and south, and park boats behind it, none in front. Discussion?
Can I make just one?
Yes, please.
One more comment. I, I have a lot of hesitation on this whole project, and I said it earlier on, that when this first came in for approval, there was no parking of boats in the front of the building except for in the circle, when it was originally approved 11 years ago. It's creeped and crawled and expanded to where now there's boats everywhere on this property, and so it's like we're frog-boiled here, we're, we just can't seem to get our hands on to what's gonna be the, the issue, and it just keeps expanding and expanding. So I'm frustrated that, that we're only now coming to re-establishing this formally. I understand that Nancy Larson gave him an administrative approval to park boats where the cars were supposed to be, and that at least explains how come there's boats out there now, that they weren't originally on the plan to be there, except in that circle. And, so, I'm, I'm gonna approve, I'm gonna vote for this thing with the, the gate setback, but I do it very hesitantly, because I feel like we're being creeped into a, a, a more crowded and more crowded situation, I hope we don't keep going.
Can I make a comment in direction to what you have to say, and I, I understand your frustrations, but, you know, a boatyard is the way I have it, and a boatyard is hopefully a, something that the community needs, and, you know, a boatyard is a, a, a situation a, uh, something that the community needs, and, you know, a boatyard is a, 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 a situation that, you know, it's, it's going to constantly change like a Rubik's Cube, and I just hope that you'll, you know, allow me to manage that boatyard as I have for many years, and keep it safe, and understand that it is a difficult thing to do, and there'll be times that you'll think that it looks great, and there'll be times you'll be scratching your head a little bit over it, but I can assure you that I'll always keep on top of it and try to make it accessible for customers and anyone that comes in there and work very hard, as I always have, to, you know, make it work. It's an unusual business, and I think that's, and it's very weird as compared to what you usually approve, and it's really hard to justify in some ways, you're right. Uh, but at the same time, it, it, it's more than, I can't handle a bigger yard, I can't afford a bigger yard, and this works very, very well for me and my family. And, uh, you know, that's all I can say about that, and I hope you can understand.
I, I understand and appreciate that, and I, I realize you've been there a long time. The, the concerns that are expressed by the fire department, the concerns that have been expressed by the one neighbor who has not been happy-
Right.
Either due to drainage or to sites of boats or whatever. You know, those all still continue to pile up, so-
Sure.
I agree that you're working to try and make it a fundamental, fundamental business, um, and you have to keep a reputation there. If people are angry with you, that's not good for your business, so-
That's right.
I'm sure you're doing your best. It's just frustrating to see it continue to creep and get larger and... Anyway.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think some of that's going to come down to whatever the resolutions you work out with the fire department, because that's really the internal part where all these boats are parking. We're kind of drawing a line by the road, and if anything, you're going to have less room than what you've been using in the past, because you'll be behind this gate. Um, with that, is there other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, are we assuming or requesting that the applicant will present us with a new, this plan effectively revised with the two display boat-for-sale areas-
We're not at final approval phase.
Oh, sorry. All right, shut up.
We're going to table this and let him go talk to the fire department about all that.
Okay.
And he'll probably have lots of changes on his plan.
Okay.
Um, or if it's, if it's the will of the board, we'll do that. All of those, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion respecting the gate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Nope. Seven zero zero to set that gate as the setback that's allowed and, and carry that forward. Now, um, how long do you think that you need to go meet with the fire department and come up with some answers on what you might do internally to satisfy their requirements?
I'd be glad to go try to meet with, uh, at least contact John in the next couple of days and see if he has a time that he'd like to discuss, you know, what he's looking for, uh, by next week.
Okay. Um, our second meeting in November is one that's got a special agenda that's limited for a presentation, isn't it?
Well, it's only got one thing on it, which is the presentation.
We, we've limited it to just the presentation.
Yeah, I think that's what we did when we decided to have a meeting second in November was to limit it just to that.
Was to limit it. Okay, then it goes into December then.
So, I think December sixth is the next meeting that we have to consider an application, uh, where the agenda has some availability. So, that gives you a little more than a few days, but of course Thanksgiving's going to sit right in the middle of that and-
I'll move on as quickly as I can to figure out, you know, what needs to be done and how to go about that, and see, see what the fire department's needs are, and if this is more of a nighttime request, that the yard be left a certain way when we're not there, to, you know, administer things or move things, uh, whatever it might be needed at that time. Uh, I think that was his big issue, is how it's left at night.
So, in terms of what you come back with for us from the fire department, it would help if there's sort of clear delineations, and you could sort of look on a plan and say, oh, here's the line and you don't go over it, or here's the side of the building and th- these are the hours, you know, something that's fairly defined, so somebody wouldn't have any difficulty if they came to your site at night or after hours or whatever, and had a look around and said, I, I can see clearly, he's doing what he's supposed to do, or there's not really any gray area about this. If it's kind of confusing and it's sort of like, you know, provides sufficient space for a truck, well, that's not enough of a description for us to really know what does that mean. So, um, please think in those terms when you meet with them and come up with some whatever that's really solid and concrete that we can-
Digest.
Digest a little bit. Does that make sense?
And convert to notes on the plan, because I think we'll want notes on the plan that will cover this. So, um-
Yeah, and set forth those things.
Mr. Chairman, are we giving the applicant the right to knock those trees down?
I don't know that he needs our approval to, for that. I think we-
Well, if they're on a landscaping plan, the answer is yes, he does.
Yes, he does.
I don't have a landscaping plan.
Well, we don't have one, but we have to assume knowing land-
There's an approved landscaping plan.
There wouldn't be an approved landscaping plan, and I'm sure those trees were on it. So, can I make a motion, a motion that we allow a v- variation on the landscaping plan to allow the removal of those trees from where they are?
Um, yes, but before I take a second to your motion, I had a question for Jillian. If we make a decision like that tonight, but then the applications continue to deal with this fire department thing, does that give the applicant enough of something he can act on, or is that still sort of something that's in progress until we make the final decision on the whole project?
I would say he would need final approval, and this plan would need to be signed before he was making any site changes. Is that, is that the question?
Yes, that's exactly the question. So, in, in those terms-
I withdraw that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you don't have to withdraw it. I just want to know from the board's standpoint, does it help to actually see the landscape plan that's in the file before we decide to amend, decide to amend it? So, if we continue it, we can ask the staff to supply us with that out of the file?
Definitely.
Is Google, is that okay with you?
Of course.
You don't, you don't have to withdraw your motion if you don't want to.
I'm withdrawing it, Mr. Chairman.
Skip, what you got?
Uh, on those trees in the landscaping plan, I mean, I believe the pictures that I showed you coming down the road, they're not blocking anyone's view, those three trees, as far as when you pull out of John's driveway to look like a-
I think-
Right, there are some bushes by the telephone pole that are-
That you think are on his property, or they're not even part of your landscaping plan?
Yeah, that is blocking, but those trees are so far back that, you know, they've got to be ten, fifteen feet from the sidewalk. And usually when you pull out, you pull out just before the sidewalk, and, and you can s- those trees aren't blocking anyone's view going up and down the road.
Well-
And they kind of make it, a spot where people know that they can't just suddenly pull up and, you know, park there, because, you know, there's trees there, you know?
I think that's why it makes some sense to take a look at the landscaping plan and compare that to what's on the ground, because you're right, that there could well be bushes and trees on the ground that were never on the site plan, and of course, then you don't need our approval to deal with them.
And those, I'd love to get rid of that and to make visibility better, but I, I think those trees are far enough back where they're really not blocking anyone's view when you pull out.
Well, I, I would hesi- I hesitate to disagree with you, sir, but if I was trying to pull out of the battery place, I would think those trees, certainly the one that's nearest the road, would impede my ability to decide whether it was safe to pull out.
Yeah, if we're talking about the same tree, you're probably absolutely right. I, you know, if it's the ones I'm-
So, I'm saying- Yeah, but that one may be on-
Yeah, all right.
Whose it is and all of that stuff.
Whose is it? Perhaps you and John could between you work out who owns which tree.
Well, I just think, why would they have put those trees there in the landscaping plan in the first place if they were blocking a view?
Yeah, no, it, it certainly wouldn't have been anybody's intent to do that, and that's why it's better to sort this stuff out. And it, it helps to have you and John, between now and December sixth, sort that out too, and know what you want to do, so that you guys are on the same page as, as far as telling us, not, no, don't go cut them, just tell us what you're proposing to cut.
I'm going to go out there and chop his trees down first thing in the morning.
Just go get rid of them.
Put some battery acid into the stump of the tree, and that'll be the end of-
No, no, don't do that. Um, it's, it is generally the intention in, in an industrial zone to try and have a little landscaping around the, the, you know, large warehouse-style buildings, just so that the place looks a little better. So, I don't think it's, it's not, it's not my desire to see trees cut down that aren't necessary to clear the view.
They were very expensive.
Yeah, so let's not cut them down if you, if we like them, and if they aren't hurting nothing. Or if they can be pruned up so that they're above the, the sightline or whatever. If there's another solution, I'm certainly fine with that. That's why I kind of wanted to see what the landscape plan looked like before we got to that. Sure, John, come on.
Just, I would say, and one thing I would say is, maybe some of you guys can go down there and try and put yourself in the situation to pull out of my yard.
Okay, so John was just saying that, he's suggesting that we all go down there and have a look and try and pull out the yard. And I think some of us, I, I, I think I've been on your site before too. Um, normally, if the planning board wanted to do an organized site visit, then that's sort of an official function to do that, but if everybody in the community happens to make an observation, can't control that. Um, but I think I may take a drive-by and have a look. So, with that, um, if we continue, uh, what remains of what you're proposing to consider it December sixth and give you time to deal with the trees with John, um, and then deal with the fire department, then we'll be ready to kind of know more about these facts. You think that'd be okay for you?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion or comments by members of the board?
Do you want a motion to the effect, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we do.
Well, just unless there's more questions-
May I make a motion then? We, we table this motion till December the sixth, for, for the applicant to provide us the extra information we're seeking, with no further notification to a butters, and to be held at seven o'clock in this room.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion? Nelson has the second for this one. I think Vinny was offering a second too.
Oh, good for you.
I gotta look that way a little more often. I hardly ever look left. I'm kind of a right guy. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to continue to six in December. I hope you feel better, Skip.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in about a month.
Appreciate it.
And then, you know, get those things taken care of. If you need help from the staff, I'm sure Jillian will help you out with any of that stuff that you need.
She's been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda is item number four. It's Franklin Savings Bank as the applicant and KRG Merrimack Village, LSC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval to construct a two thousand one hundred sixty-one square-foot bank. The parcel's located at one Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial, Anok for Conservation Districts, tax map four D, Lot eighty. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Um, yes, just some updates since, uh, the memo went out. Um, we did hear from New Hampshire DOT on the jurisdiction of entrance determinations along this section of Camp Sergeant Road, and it has been determined that the town has jurisdiction over this section of Camp Sergeant Road for the planning board to make that decision. Um, as well, the applicant has, uh, provided a truck movement plan that has raised some concerns from Public Works, Fire, Community Development, and, um, most recently, CLD. Um, and I just wanted to note that, um, after meeting with the applicant, we have, you know, noted to them that the Camp Sergeant Road, um, accessway is not favored as it's designed. It can accommodate large trucks or a fire engine, and it's recommended that the applicant respond to the concerns that were raised and discuss some possible alternate concepts that might improve the access and circulation to the site.
Okay, and with that, please introduce yourself. Once you've gotten a chance to set up and settle in, if you need another minute to get the display together, go ahead, take it. And then, um, when you're ready, introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board-
If you want to stand up, you gotta take that microphone with you, otherwise you gotta stay close to this one. That one you can take away from the stand, walk around with it, do whatever you want.
I can talk.
Or you can sit down.
Or you can sit down and talk to that one.
Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
I can hear you fine no matter what, but the folks at home don't get anything if you're not getting that phone.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, Jillian, uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Um, my name is Richard Peeler. I am with Paramount Partners out of Quincy, Massachusetts. Uh, we are consultants to Franklin Savings Bank, and, um, we are here this evening, uh, to answer questions. We know that, um, we are not going to receive any decisions this evening. We're not looking for that. What we are looking for is feedback. Uh, we've met, uh, on two separate occasions with members of the staff of the various departments, uh, within town, uh, town government, and got their feedback. Um, you're a consulting engineer. Uh, we did get the, their comments, but it was not until, uh, this afternoon. Uh, so, uh, many of those, we will be addressing at the, hopefully at the next board meeting, which is on December sixth. Uh, but as I said, uh, we are here and would appreciate the opportunity to present to you, uh, what we're proposing, uh, for this site, um, and to get your feedback, so that when we do come back, uh, we will have addressed, uh, your concerns, a- as well as the concerns and comments and suggestions from Jillian and the other members of various departments. Um, at this point, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Ron Magoon, who is the President, Chief Operating Officer for Franklin Savings Bank.
Good evening, everyone.
Push the button, please.
Yeah. Yeah. That was bright, okay. Thank you. Uh, I'm Ron Magoon, President of Franklin Savings Bank. I live in Franklin. I know, uh, as I was sitting here, I was struck by the fact that you have the three Bs tonight. You have boats, batteries, and banks, so it's pretty cool. Uh, I thought I'd just give a little background on our organization. Uh, I know you know what banking is all about, but Franklin Savings Bank is a mutual organization, meaning we don't have shareholders. We were established in eighteen sixty-nine. We have been in business for a hundred and forty-seven years. Uh, this will be our eighth full-branch location. Most of our branches are in central New Hampshire, uh, Franklin, Bristol, Laconia, Guilford. Bosquin is our, uh, furthest branch south, but we also have a loan production office in Bedford. And, uh, due to the success that we've had in Bedford, we started looking for a location down in this general area of the state, and, uh, uh, found this opportunity in Merrimack to be one that was particularly compelling. Uh, as an organization, um, I, I like to say that we're all proud to be community bankers, and I, uh, think it's exciting that we can bring community banking, uh, to Merrimack. In terms of products and services, fairly standard. We do residential lending, commercial lending. We have about a fifty-fifty split in terms of our portfolios between residential and commercial. We will do, uh, investment management, insurance, brokerage, uh, really everything on that side except for property and casualty insurance, so we have a pretty full suite of products and services. And, um, I'm not going to bore you with any other details about banking, but that's a little bit about who we are as an organization and our history, and, um, I think I should say, it's been something that, um, something that's been very important to us is our philanthropic nature and, uh, our support of our communities. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, we established a foundation. Uh, we seeded it with a million dollars, and since that time, uh, we've given back to the community, to nonprofit agencies, nine-hundred thousand dollars, and over two hundred grants, and we still have over a million dollars in the original fund. Uh, we have a scholarship fund with, uh, three hundred fifty thousand in it. We give out about twenty, twenty-five scholarships a year from that. So, um, that's the nature of community banking. That's one of the advantages that we have is a mutual, and not having shareholders, is that we're able to take a long-term view of our organization and our business model, and, uh, we work pretty hard to be good corporate citizens and be an important part of the community. So, unless there are specific questions, I'll stop talking and we'll get to the details. Thank you.
Yeah, let's get to the details. Tell us what you're saying. I turned off that time.
I'm Jason, Jason Hill, Civil Engineer at TF Moran in Bedford. Here, I'm going to review with you, um, you know, as Richard mentioned, what we want to do with these, with this meeting. What I want to do is, uh, present what we have. Um, we have some comments which we're going to address from, you know, the town engineer and the town highway and fire that we're working on, and I have a plan of some modifications to what we submitted to you.
Okay.
Uh, which was intended to at least address one of the comments. Just looking for, um, not a, it's a waiver condition which I'll get into for a driveway, and, uh, wanted to get not a vote on the waiver, since we don't have any review back that I'm aware of from the town, but put that in front of you and see what your thoughts were on what we're proposing. And get the application accepted into the books as complete. Have any a butters testimony that we could consider, so that when we come back, assuming, you know, I'm assuming we would come back at the next meeting in December to hopefully wrap this, everything up, but, um, I want to understand if there's any concerns that we can look at, you know, related to any of that type of thing. But, um, so that's kind of why we're here, why I'm here. Um, the project is, it's a small site right at Dobson Way, one Dobson Way, the Shaw's Plaza, right off of Camp Sergeant Road. It's a little under an acre, um, C2 district, um, and we're proposing, it's map four D Lot eighty, and we're proposing a, a single-story, two thousand one hundred and sixty-one square-foot branch bank with associated parking and driveways. And this use is a perfect use for this site as it's, um, going to be a really attractive building. It's a perfect, um, it's a good business. It's a good way to bring this property onto the tax rolls. It'll look nice at, at the front door of this shopping center, and it's really probably one of the best uses you could propose in this tight, small site. Um, so it's going to benefit the town, I believe, and benefit this shopping plaza. Um, so the key components that we have on this project was the building itself. There's nineteen parking spaces. Um, the building will have a sprinkler fully, fully automated fire suppression system. Um, there's some of the parking, there's a employee parking area. Can you see the plan on the floor? I can li- I can hold it up. I should have brought two easels, but-
There we go. Yeah, let's hold that up there.
Yeah, that's better. So, this parking area is for employees. It's angled parking, and there's an existing detention pond for the plaza that they built, when they built the plaza. So, we're going to propose to fill that in, a portion of that area for this employee parking, which is necessary for the, for the bank. We'd need, you know, this number of spaces and the arrangement of these parking spaces is, is essential in terms of the conveniently located spaces on this relative to the front door, and then the employee in the back, and it's a tight site, so that's why we were required to encroach into this easement. Um, so we have that. We have, um, two drive-through lanes here and here, and this, and then the queue, the, the actual required queuing or the stacking extends into this lane here, with a bypass lane around it. We would, there's an existing curb cut at Dobson Way. We're going to basically hold the center of that curb cut and make minor modifications to widen it, um, for, uh, to have a dedicated left and right turn for egress to exit the site, and then we have a right turn in, or an entrance for its both-way, both-directional entrance. So, we're widening this drive. We're proposing to widen it, and then we're going to propose to, um, do a, a small area of, uh, like a raised aggregate for emergency vehicle access, just the cobbles, which where you have like a, a two-inch curb reveal where you're, a traversable slope, so that in a fire condition, the fire truck could drive over that surface to access.
Between the two lanes, or where are you putting that?
Uh, that's actually not, that's actually shown on one of the exhibits that I have. It actually is going to be right here.
Okay.
Right off the end.
Two line.
Yeah, I can definitely, uh, show you.
So, that's-
Oh, it shows up the best on this. Yeah, these are the new exhibits that I'm preparing. I have reproduced copies. Hold them, if you can submit. That's the, the planning department. Okay. So, this here is Hatch.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, take that microphone with you. You can take it off of that stand and just walk around with it.
So, this plan is, uh, actually a turning template plan, and it's showing a, um, well, it's really intended to show the modifications that we're discussing making to these driveways as a part of our process with, uh, you know, reviewing things with Captain Manuelli. Uh, and one of the things would be to enable the fire truck to access the site from Dobson Way without occupying any of the exit lane. We would make a, um, small, uh, traversable or just a raised aggregate surface, typically a truck apron, in this can, in this position, to enable them to get in and access from that direction. So, that's what I'm talking about by modifying this existing curb cut, is to widen it and to add that, you know, truck apron.
Sacrificing that, is it?
Yeah, there was some shrubs in that location. We'd rearrange them. Um, so that would be, and then we have a proposed new- So that would be, and then we have a proposed new driveway on Camp Sergeant Road which would provide access for fire truck, delivery vehicle, and customers for convenience as well for customers, and take traffic away from this existing signal. And so, so we've made, we're proposing this new curb cut off of Camp Sergeant Road which requires a waiver to be 60 feet from the gas station driveway where I think it's over 100 feet. I don't know the number is required, but that's to facilitate this emergency vehicle as well as.
So you'll be 60 and what required might be 100 or?
I believe it's 150.
150.
So you'll be at 60 and you would normally have to have 150? Okay.
Yeah, so 150 feet is somewhere down in the intersection.
Yep.
So you, that wouldn't work with the infrastructure and.
Intersection.
Yeah, so this proposed driveway, subject to being reviewed by the town and CLD again, but this is a design template, I met with them, that has the, you know, what I believe is equivalent to his system, and we will review this to ensure that it meets his, your town's requirements.
When you say his, you're talking about the DPW or the fire department? Because they both had comments about that.
Yes, fire.
Fire.
Well, fire and DPW, both.
Okay.
Was, they're both reviewing this. But that's the proposed access, and this proposed configuration is different from the one that's shown on your plans.
It's a little bit wider.
It's just a little bit wi, it's just a little bit wider.
Okay.
So the architecture is indicated on the plans that you have, the reduced plans, the renderings.
Okay.
And I also can put it up on this.
The other side of that.
I should have brought two easels.
So in the staff's memo, they had originally said that we needed to sort out this question about our authority, and that question's been resolved, and we do have the authority to make a decision about this curb cut. Their staff memo commented that the truck turning plan that was supplied to us was somehow insufficient, and that's been at least partially addressed by meeting with the town and getting that rumble strip area that's going to allow a truck to go over it, and you can get the truck movement plans. And then you've got a reconfiguration of that swipe way, driveway, entrance, and we're not really sure what that status of that is with the DPW and the fire at this point. Is that correct?
Yes.
Summarized all of that? Okay. And so that addresses generally the kinds of concepts that were in the staff's memo, although we, it's up to decide on completeness and all of that. Jillian, you look like you're.
I just want to note that DPW is very much not in favor of the Camp Sergeant entrance at all. They wanted me to make sure I noted that.
Yeah, and I think that they'll probably find some support on the board, although from my viewpoint, I like it. I think it really helps the circulation on your site. It keeps people from having to go completely around the building, and I don't think that there's all that much traffic coming out of the gas station to be concerned about, but I have a feeling I'm going to be a lone, lone person in the middle of the ocean on that one, so. Is there fire requirements for that?
The fire, go ahead, I don't mean to interrupt.
Are, there, there would be fire requirements. You'd have to be able to get a fire truck into that driveway.
And the, the fire department is looking for access from two directions to this property. One, because of the existing median aisle, you can't, Dobson Way has a median and the U-turn condition coming up Camp Sergeant, you turn right at the signal, you can't turn into the site because of how narrow it is. So you can't come in and access the site with a fire truck from the, the signal. You can only do it from the Shaw's side, from Continental Boulevard. So this secondary access that I'm proposing, we are proposing, gives you access from another direction, although Captain Manuelli had stated that in all likelihood, the most, the closest station would be from the Shaw's direction, from Continental. He still wanted it from both directions. So this provides that condition, which would improve the, you know, the public safety. It also takes a little bit of traffic, although there's not a lot of traffic generation from this trip gen, from this development. It's, we're looking at like new trips, 25, 26, that it's putting on the road, but it'll alleviate a little bit of additional congestion of that light.
I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, the congestion, the lights, less of an issue, but if I was going to be a customer and wanted to go to your place, I would think that it's a lot easier to be able to swipe in there before you get to the light than do that. I don't know that you'll find a lot of flexibility with the DPW, but the fire department may. Their concern is the conflicting movements with the people turning out of the gas station. At the same time, you've got cars decelerating and trying to turn, maybe even with a turn signal that's early enough that they weren't sure whether you're going to turn into the gas station or turn into the bank, and, and that kind of situation, which makes a lot of sense to me, but, I mean, I gotta fall on one camp or the other, and I told you which one I fall on. I just don't know whether there's other board members that are going to support that. But that's the question that we need to give you some guidance on so that you know how to go and meet and design and all of that. I don't know if it matters for the board to have some understanding about whether the fire department can be satisfied and would be in favor of this driveway movement, and then it's DPW that doesn't support it, or whether both of those agencies would not support it, and that would impact the way the board thought about it as well. Does that make sense? In other words, knowing how many of the agencies are aligned against you might impact the board.
Yeah, conflicting, competing interests, it's going to.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Change, yeah.
And.
And I don't have that answer, obviously.
Yeah.
I don't have that at this time.
Let's hear some discussion. What do you guys think?
Well, Mr. Chairman, are we saying that's the?
Are we saying that's the presentation, in which case we should accept it for discussion?
If you'd like to consider the question of accepting it, let's do it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept this project for discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Desire. Did I look the wrong way again, Danny? Do you have a hand up? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So 7-0-0 to accept the application as complete. What's the discussion with respect to the applicant so far?
I'm just going to pipe in.
You gotta get closer or you gotta turn it on.
I would hope these gentlemen come here with the approval of DPW and the fire department and any other state agencies that are involved with this, because I'm certainly not one to vote against them if they have a reason for an issue, so I guess my suggestion is try to get all your ducks in a row at that point so that we don't have to, we don't have to deliberate about what they want or what they don't want. We have letters of recommendation.
I think that, I don't disagree with you, although I think that what he suggested in his presentation is we could be presented with one agency that wants two driveways and one agency who doesn't. And then it's up to us.
And I guess what I'm saying is, is do your best to try to get both to.
And then the other thing Jillian mentioned was that, and I just want to restate it, is that the DOT has signed off with their jurisdiction. They have weighed in on it. We've, they've reviewed our traffic and our plans, and they have stated that the right-of-way over this frontage is controlled by the town and not the DOT.
Yeah. Jillian kind of presented that to us, although I didn't know that they had looked at your plan, but typically when they do that, that isn't necessarily an endorsement of your plan as much as it's saying it's not our, not our area.
Not our problem.
They agreed with our, you know, not necessarily with any of the driveway conditions, but the, the traffic report that we had produced and our calculations and things like that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think you're on.
As we have already met twice with various department representatives, prior to December 6th, we expect to do so again. Obviously, we, what we are here, we want to present a, a project that works for everybody, for the town as well as the, as the bank, and we believe that we can make an argument as to why it would benefit, there would be a benefit to having the curb cut on, which would only be a right turn in only on Camp Sergeant Road. And so we just ask that we have that opportunity to make that case, and both to the fire department, DPW, as well as the planning board.
So do you want to outline some of those details now, or you want to hold that for December 6th? I mean, I know that so far you've presented that it helps the circulation of your site and that the fire department prefers having two entrances to the bank because they could access it from two different directions. Are there other details in terms of the pros?
Well, we believe it's a public safety issue, having that curb cut. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're on.
Yeah, you're doing fine.
We believe it's a public, a public safety issue. The, when we met yesterday, the captain indicated that he would like to see two points of access to that property. The question is, is which is the better of the two for the fire department to be able to get to that site quickly, expeditiously? And so, again, the, based on the comments we received yesterday and our engineers listening to those comments, making the adjustments, we're able to drop those plans off today, but we have not been able to sit down with the captain and the DPW, et cetera, to really kind of walk through it again. So we listened pretty well, and that's what we're doing here this evening so that when we come back again, we, we've addressed all of the issues and concerns that all, all within the town.
What are your thoughts about DPW's concerns about traffic and the confluence of the gas station traffic and your traffic?
I, I, I don't, I, on the one hand, I can understand. We're not talking about a fast food restaurant. We're not talking about a convenience use. We're talking about a use where people, customers of the bank are going to be, they're going to know, because the, the big issue that Mr. Fox had was that people coming down Camp Sergeant Road towards the intersection and they see this curb cut to be able to take a right in, and it would be too mu, it would, it would come upon them too quickly. I, I don't agree with that because many of the people, if you look at the population distribution within the town, the majority of the population, it would be north and east of Camp Sergeant Road. And so the majority of the customers are going to be coming from that direction. Once you've been there, you know that that curb cut is there. So it's not a, a quick, a D-jerk reaction, oh, let me turn into this, into the curb cut. So in that regard, I, I disagree with Mr. Fox.
Well, also, we've modified the driveway, and it's now wider than it was originally proposed.
Right.
So there's a more of a, it's more liberal in terms of a P-vehicle, the passenger vehicle, which is the most frequent use, which is only expected to be four trips in the peak, in the peak hour. We're expecting a trip, at one, one trip every four minutes total to the site from multiple directions. So we're talking about maybe peak, two cars, three cars in that exit. It's wide, wider than it has to because it's designed for a fire truck, we could sign it. There's also an existing, and it's not an ideal situation, but there's an existing cut for the gas station 50, 60 feet away. So I don't, haven't checked with the police to see what the accident history is in that area, but I don't see it functioning any differently than that existing second curb cut for the gas station as well.
The concern is, if I'm sitting in the gas station and I'm going to turn right, because that's the only direction I'm going to go from the gas station, and I look to my left to see what's coming, and when I don't see any traffic, I pull out, and I may not have been paying attention to the car that just started slowing down to turn into your site that I thought was already past me and beyond me. And that's the, the confluence, and I guess if you're going to sort of look at both sides of it, the, the DPW's view of it will be that traffic is there every day, all day, and, and new one-story building with sprinklers, the possibility of having to approach it from two directions with a fire truck at the same time is probably a lot more remote. And I'm, I'm arguing both sides of the equation, but I tell you, I support your, I support your driveway. I mean, I like the idea of having it two ways, and just from a customer standpoint, because I think it's a lot easier to get around your bank without having to go 360 around it, and if anybody's trying to park in your space, they don't have a, a flow of cars trying to go completely around the building. But you do need to address those kinds of concerns from the DPW.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, the captain, I did not say once, not twice, but at least three times during the meeting yesterday, that he wants to see a second access point. Where do you put the second access point? We think it makes more sense on Camp Sergeant Road. Another thing, and I mentioned this before, and the, and the captain didn't agree, but the fire station that would be rest, that would be responding to an issue at the site, at the subject site, it's going to be coming up Continental Boulevard, and that they would take a right into the Shaw's curb cut along Continental. What if there is, it's busy? What if it is a Friday afternoon or during the shopping centers' peak hours? That fire engine is going to have to maneuver around cars that are coming in, that, cars belonging to the shoppers that are inside. Wouldn't it be quicker for the fire truck to go straight up Continental, take a right at the light, and then take a right, right into that, right into the, into the subject site? Now, I mentioned this to the captain the first time we met, and he disagreed, but the more I look at it personally, being familiar with a lot of shopping centers, because this is what we do throughout New England, is that during peak hours, if it's people shopping for Thanksgiving or Christmas or some of the busier times, I mean, that could be a, an obstacle course for a big vehicle, like a fire sta, a fire truck, to maneuver around that way. And then they still have to be able to go up and make a somewhat convoluted turn into the site.
The, the rest of the site, the Shaw's Plaza actually isn't that old, and the layout of it had in mind the fact that these sites would be developed with the walk-in clinic and, and all of those. And so the approach to how fire trucks would get in there is not something that just kind of developed over time without sort of someone mapping it. And so the idea that the fire chief has a sense of how he would get in and how he would go, I think is not sort of taken casually. I think that that was developed and designed that way, but clearly, the, the Camp Sergeant Road is the secondary entrance. I just don't think that it would be the primary, and you're talking to the guy that would be at the wheel, so, not me.
What would happen if the, the fire vehicles from that station were attending to some other issue?
Well, they certainly would use the secondary exit, but would they, would they?
But my, my question is, is then the trucks from the station right here on Daniel Webster Highway, what is going to be the more convenient way for them to access? And if they, if, if, if the responding trucks are coming from the Daniel Webster Highway station, they, they come onto Camp Sergeant Road, if they make, can't make that immediate right turn in to access the property, they have to take a right onto Dobson Way, and for those vehicles to make that type of a loop, that size vehicle to make that type of a loop to come around is going to be very, very difficult.
You may be right, but in terms of what we've got before us, if the fire department is already in favor of two exits, which one is their primary and which ones are secondary doesn't really make much difference to our viewpoint. We've sort of still got to resolve this conflict between what the DPW thinks and the fire department thinks, if, if they ultimately end up that way. You may end up where they both disagree or they both agree. Desiree.
All right, so a few comments to this. The first one is more, we've asked fire department to look at, if this second entrance, I'd like not, for it not to be here, it's not that hard to go around there, and I, I want to see less parking on this site. I'll talk about that in a moment. However, if, if we could limit the access to that, like, like they did at the mall where it's materials, it's not designed for everybody to drive on, but the truck can go up and over it, and then that way, it's not for regular people, but it's there for the, the fire department when they need it.
Some kind of emergency access way?
Yeah, whether, and if it was just, I don't know, say, rate, raise asphalt, but that's fun to drive on, yeah. Something, something in the middle, because I know that they're not going to want like a, a crossing guard type of thing that they have to activate to, to go through, because traditionally they've not enjoyed.
It activates instantly there, right?
Yeah, but maybe, maybe the, the. Yeah, but maybe, maybe the, the plastic pylons that stick up that you can smack your car through, and they fold down, they come back up, but they're fine. But it doesn't say, all the traffic, hey, come into me. You'll probably get some jerks that do it.
I think from the applicant's standpoint, they're certainly looking for their customers' traffic, and the fire department's traffic is secondary to that. But if they don't have their customer traffic, I think they'd probably not build it at all.
I don't think you're gonna lose your customer traffic not having that second entrance. And the fact is, it's not, you've got all the traffic, that's kind of a high-speed intersection, Continental and Camp Sergeant. People are coming through there. If you're not going to the gas station, you're gonna go past the gas station, go to the light. There's a fair amount of options that you can go there. There's two exits out of the gas station as it is, because you can kind of go on either side. So, there's, until traffic gets the hang of it, it's gonna be an issue. Eventually, it may get better, but it's certainly gonna be a problem to start off with while people learn the new pattern. And knowing when you pull out of the gas station, I mean, that's, that's one thing. So, I would just, personally, I would, I would like not to see it there. I, as a, as a customer of a bank, I have no problem driving around and in. I have to go in here to go to the liquor store, to go to any other thing that's right here. It's a nice, convenient location. So, I think the property is appropriate for the site. I just, I personally don't want to see that driveway.
Does that mean you'll be the first customer?
I don't know, you'd have to talk me out of the anti-bank one, whatever the.
Digital?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, pretty much. Credit union, thank you.
Do you know credit unions don't pay taxes?
So.
That's good.
So, you pay, you pay 'em for 'em.
So, one of the things that just occurred to me as Desiree was talking is, have you had, or would you consider having conversations with the gas station property owner about an internal connection between their site and yours?
We could certainly do that, but we have no control over it. He could take us, tell us to take a flying.
Yeah, absolutely, of course, yeah, I can't force you to.
We're more than happy to have.
I couldn't force you to, because that would resolve this, this closely located driveway problem, which has got what DPW tied up. If people would enter your site and be able to cross over from the gas station, you wouldn't have that.
Desiree wants to say something, but I want to say something to Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I know, you've been dying to.
I'll wrap up, I just wanted to mention two other points.
What does that mean?
When, I, the parking layout on this, I know the site's kind of weird shaped, so you're kind of trying to shove as many spots in here as possible. I'm not a fan of two-way traffic, like you come down three spaces, and then it's do not enter, and you have to turn around and get out of there. And then the same thing, if you're coming in from the street, there's that section that's, that one's actually not that hard. Like, when you're, my big thing is, when you first come into the parking lot, right now, if you're coming in off Camp Sergeant, that, that little lot, there's really only one way to get, like, out of there. Like, you have, you're forcing people to make a U-turn out of there. So, they're gonna have to back out of this, down your driveway and get out of there if they're in a larger vehicle. That, does that make sense?
People's coming in here.
Yeah, that small section between your building and Camp Sergeant Road has two-way traffic, and it will be a little difficult for the people to maneuver in that.
It's two-way until you get to the driveway where it wraps around, and then you're sending one-way traffic here. So, it's two-way right here, and then you're back through. So, personally, I don't, I don't, I don't find that a nice, elegant design solution. I, I was trying to figure out if there was some way where, I don't have sketch paper on my person right now, but if, if I did, I was trying to see if we can get the bank kind of in the southeast corner. And if it, if it was there, then you can get the driveway access around, parking on one side, and then you start to not have the donut of parking lot all the way around it. Yeah, if the building was, yeah, rotated down there. But I understand that starts to put the driveway, the exit for the, the drive-through part right up against your entrance-exit thing, so.
You gotta get to a microphone. Hold one with you.
You really can't move the building east at all because of the narrowness of this driveway with the bypass lane and the minimum required stacking.
You would lose, if I'm saying it, you would lose the parking on the bottom, those three spaces on the bottom and that driveway around. Your building would now go down, and that would be landscaped through there, and then you'd gain that space. My, what I was trying to do was get you the parking on the gas station side, and maybe move down your driveway entrance on the far end a little bit. I don't, I don't think it's possible, but it's something that I, I don't know if you've gone to the direction.
I think the combination of factors, because of this median in the aisle, to try to access the site with moving any of the building east or south, results in you're losing accessibility. I don't believe you'd have enough room to turn a fire truck around, and I do think you'd end up, there's only a few feet.
Actually, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any pavement beneath your building in that tra, I don't see where the north arrow is on this one to see where I'm.
Pretty much.
So, the south side of your building would, would be landscaped and then up to the edge of the property, with no parking or pavement on that end of the building. You'd sort of access three ways around, is what she's proposing.
But then how would you get, how would the fire truck get around?
If you do that, then customers who are in the drive-up lane are gonna be going the opposite direction of people that are coming in around the building, and gonna have cars going against one another.
So, anyway, it's, we love to make suggestions, but we recognize it's not our role to redesign. Try and tell you that, the way that you have to do it. I know that there's some more, Aleister, go ahead, you've been dying to.
No, go, go, Mr. Chairman, you continue what you're saying.
I wanted to know more about the infringement on the drainage pond and what your solution is for how that's gonna be managed, because it's smaller now than it was before.
Yeah, there's a pond that was designed 2004, and it got approved by the state, and it got approved by the town. And basically, we've done a few things. We've, we got a copy of what they designed and what they proposed with the convenient MD in 2014, and then we surveyed, surveyed it, surveyed the pond. So, basically, what we've determined is that, we've determined a few things. Number one is that when they originally designed the sites, they designed capacity for this site in that pond. And secondly, we determine that the pond has greater volume than what was designed in the original design. And then we also, we actually modified it because the rain design, the rainfalls are higher now than they were for designing. So, we lost, you know, storage by the new rainfall rates that we need to design for. But at the end of the day, the increase in volume in the as-built condition offset the reduction in volume from the parking spaces that encroach into it.
Okay.
So, that mitigated it. And then we supplemented that by our proposed system for this parking lot is an underground chamber system, storm tech-type system typical for these. So, we had, so we also increased the storage by proposing this underground chambers for treatment. And then we overflowed that system into, because it needs an emergency overflow condition. So, that overflows into this pond. But the combined capacity of this system is greater than what it was originally designed for. Although this site itself has more impervious material than it was originally designed for, at the end of the day, we got a little bit more capacity.
I remember in my day job representing a client in London Dairy with an underground chambered system, and that was not favored there, and actually not allowed by their ordinances. I don't know that we have any limitations on them here, do we?
We don't.
One of the issues in London Dairy was sort of determining and assuring that there was a maintenance plan in place for the underground chambered system, because they don't happily stroll along the way a detention pond does. They need required maintenance and cleaning and things. So, if that was part of the proposal, throwing out a random idea that occurred to me, I'd wanna have a discussion about that. Are there any other comments or questions about the drainage pond, or I know?
Well, Mr. Chairman, may I actually support what you've just said? In fact, because there is underground storage, I am fairly certain, up at the mall, our outlet mall. And when we approved that, there was a maintenance plan called for, so you're absolutely correct. There is underground chambers, as has just been mentioned. And yes, there was a plan that they had to put up, maintenance plan that had to be presented to us. And you're quite right there.
All right, give him your comments about the driveway.
Well, I'm fundamentally, I hear what has been said, but from the amount of traffic that you said that is gonna go in there, and bearing in mind, I believe more and more that, whether I like it or not, the average bear does not go to a bank. The amount of cars going in to, through that is gonna be so small. And therefore, and that percentage of people is gonna be affected by the number of other people who are coming, who've zipped across the Greeley Street/Continental Junction and are trying to get on the highway. I think by having a second curb cut on that piece of road, you're actually doing a disservice to the traffic flow. Obviously, if Kyle Fox goes along with you, I'll shut up. But I have a strong feeling that Kyle will not. And I'm afraid without him beating me around the head, I can't see that it's a good idea. The one other question I also have, which I worried about, and presumably, you've thought through the security, because the one thing that worries me about having a bank this close to the highway is if somebody comes into your site with a gun and helps themselves to whatever you give them, they're gonna be on that turnpike and disappearing. It couldn't be easier. You couldn't have put a bank in a better place for an armed robber. Now, I'm only, no, I'm quite serious. And if you look at the incidence of bank robberies in this state now, it is getting to be nearly as bad as the opium crisis. So, what I'm asking for is have you thought this one through to make certain that you are, and that's one of the other reasons I don't like that curb cut, because somebody's gonna go backwards down that curb, get, is a quick way getting on the highway. I would like to see some sort of, how you're gonna make this a secure site to avoid giving it as almost a green light to the nearest bank robber. Those are two points I'd like to hear.
I'd be happy to try to address that.
Thank you.
Probably not to your satisfaction, but I'll try.
Well, it may be.
In our 147 years, we've been robbed three times. And two of them happened at a branch that was just off the highway. So, we're familiar with the phenomenon. That branch was in New Hampton, a very small branch. It's not open anymore, and that's not why we closed it. It just was too small to be profitable, and we worked really hard at that. And the other one was a year ago, in Franklin, New Hampshire, on Central Street, in an area that was across from a Hannaford, was an area you would never expect to be robbed because there was no easy way out. And my wife is a master's level drug and alcohol counselor. So, what I can tell you is if there's someone who's robbing a bank, there's probably, there's a good chance that there's a reason, and it's often drugs that's behind it. And they don't always think about what's the easiest. They're more thinking about, I need money, and I need the fastest way to get it. Having said, so what I'm saying is, is I don't think there's any way of assuring that any location isn't gonna be robbed, regardless of access. Is this one more likely because of access to the highway? Sure. In terms of our security, we do everything we can to prevent that, including annual robbery training for all of our staff, et cetera. Unfortunately, the three that we've had have been very violent, weapons shown and the whole thing. So, we're as interested as you are not having that happen.
All right. Ron, can you mention about cash recyclers and the security associated with that?
Richard brings up a good point. Most banks these days are, are not running with a lot of cash in drawers sitting around. They use what's called a cash recycler. And the cash recycler is like a small vault, and it's, you know, it's connected to the floor. It's locked to the floor, it's got an alarm system in it. And one recycler serves two stations. And basically, every cash transaction, whether it's a withdrawal or deposit, the cash goes into this recycler, and it's basically secure in there.
Okay.
So, we're not gonna have a vault, if you will, that's open with a bunch of cash sitting around. We use these recyclers as additional measure of security.
Thank you.
Anyway, I still, my comments on the curb cut stand. If Kyle Fox agrees, I'll shut up.
I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to weigh in on the curb cut thing, because although we don't necessarily have to vote on it, we need to give this applicant a consensus of where he should go as he goes and meets with them, whether he should completely abandon the idea of a curb cut, or whether there's some solution or some level of satisfaction we would have if we heard the right things.
I'm really not opposed to it, I kinda like the idea.
I'm not sure your microphone's on, Penny, I can't hear you.
I'm not opposed to the idea of the additional curb cut. I think if you get the, I mean, I'm gonna weigh more towards, if you get the approval from the fire department, if that's what they're looking for, then, you know, that's certainly gonna weigh a little bit more for me as far as Department of Public Works, I understand. You know, I've gone through that area a lot, and I gotta tell you, I don't drive faster there, because there's just so much going on. I don't see people zipping and slamming into somebody because they're trying to get out of that gas station real quick. You are really on a one-way road. And so, I think it, I think it makes a lot of sense to have it there. You're not having traffic come back the other way, you don't have people looking both directions. Everybody's looking, you know, you're looking to the left, and you start moving right. I gotta tell you, I got hit by a driver's ed teacher, who did exactly, I was slowing down, he looked left, never looked and saw me, and right into me. It can happen to anybody, and it's gonna happen at a relatively slower speed. You know, this is not a quick, this is not a fast-moving area. I mean, it may, people may think it is, and that's just my opinion. I'm definitely not opposed to the additional. I think it makes sense, I think the way the whole traffic flow is. I do agree with Desiree, the two-way on that one side, on the easterly side, it's a little, you know. I'm not a big fan of it, I'd rather see the kind of, the one-way rotation around myself. But other than that, I'm not opposed.
Any others? Wish to weigh in a comment?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in a little bit. I'd like to hear more of Kyle's argument. I, I'm not really happy with that location where it is. I think looking at combining the exit with the, with the gas station might be worth doing. I'd like to hear the answer to that. Right now, the jury's out, as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to hear more from them, but my inclination is, I don't really care for it. I see the benefit to the customers, I see, but really, it's not so difficult to go down to the lights and make your right turn and go in, and it keeps Camp Sergeant Road cleaner. So, I'm a little bit in favor of keeping, of not doing that entrance where it is, but I'm still willing to listen to the, to the pros.
So, I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand it. I guess originally, I was opposed to the concept, just because I am hesitant to have all those curb cuts. Thinking on that stretch of road, it's a very short stretch. If we were talking about a long stretch, if people go in 35, 45 miles an hour or something, I'd be a lot more concerned about a lot of multiple curb cuts right next to each other. Going along with what Benson was saying, I agree that, I don't think there's the speed. I think people that are trying to get on the highway are gonna get into the left lane. I don't even go that way. I live off Amherst Road, and I never go down that street because the extra lights and whatnot. I'll take the right and get into Shaw's or something. So, I like the access as far as going to the bank is concerned. I don't like the circulation. I wish it was a one-way all the way around, like we've done with McDonald's, like we've done with several other places. Starbucks up by the mall, just because of the problems with movements in multiple directions in that kind of an area. I think it's a concern.
Just so that we understand exactly what you're saying. So, it's the two ways in front that you, that you have an issue with?
Yeah.
Yeah, several members have said that.
There's no reason why you can't just circulate all the way around one direction the entire time.
Go counterclockwise around your building.
But the, but the right-hand turn in of Camp Sergeant, you're.
I'm more okay with than not. I mean, originally, I prefer not to see an extra curb cut there, but I would go along with that if you made it accessible for the fire trucks and deliveries and whatever else might want to come in there. I don't have as much heartburn over that. And then the only other problem that I have, while I've got the floor, is just this drainage issue and the comments from DPW or, and/or somebody, yeah, PWD saying that they, they left off the 50-year calculations, and how come that wasn't done, or was that done?
I believe that, I don't have, actually, I have a copy of the application. I submitted a, I believe I submitted. I submitted a, I believe I submitted a copy of the, what they call node listing for a 50-year storm, but I didn't submit any summaries. So that being said, when I met with the staff yesterday, I think I gave Highway a copy of the 50-year summary for that pond, so they have that now.
Yeah, they did get that, but Dawn was noting some errors and inconsistencies that she'd like to see cleared up with the design.
Yeah, we will, so we will, I will address her comment.
So I have hesitancy over that whole filling in that pond
Yep.
for parking spaces and making sure that that does meet requirements. We've had situations in town where people have designed drainage swales like that and things, and then they haven't functioned correctly. And so I'm very nervous when people want to start taking away pieces of that.
And it's in our best interest as a designer.
To make sure it works.
Liability and all of that comes with it to ensure that that functions properly. So I understand your concern, and we will address that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what, from the history of the rest of the, I know that there's cross easements for access and along the driveway and along Dobson Way and some across your property. There may be a drainage easement over that portion, which may encompass as-built rather than as-designed. And you'd have to figure out how to resolve those legal questions about reducing the size of that easement. And that would require the cooperation of whoever owns the beneficial interest from that side of the road. Not that that's a design issue, it's just a legal hurdle to get over. It does take, require the shopping plaza property owners to support what you're doing. I also, I heard Nelson mention that his support for an internal access to the gas station, and although I think I mentioned before, I just want to make clear that I don't think that we could ever put you in a position to say you got to go make the gas station people agree with you because they may not, no matter what you tell them or what you're willing to offer, they may not. But I do encourage you to go explore it. And if you came back with a solution that went through there and didn't have this curb cut at all, you may get everything that you want without having any opposition from the fire department or DPW. And it would be very difficult for us to have any trouble with it at all at that point. Desiree and Mike, you guys haven't weighed in on the driveway thing. I don't, Desiree, you did. Mike, do you have anything that you want to add?
Since the improvements were made to widen that sweep-in, I feel very comfortable that people can slow down and access that or access it a little bit more quickly if they feel someone's behind them. So I don't have a concern with that. I do have some of the concerns expressed earlier about the two-way portion. But more, I'm okay with it. I think if that one little island spot was to be removed, for me, that one, the turning into that, for me, bothers me in the sense of how that person might want to back out and the challenges with that spot. A big SUV parked in that spot may find it a little bit harder if they don't come into that space correctly. Again, just a perception.
Do you know which space that he's pointing to? I think I do.
I don't.
I don't.
In the two-way section, the last one by itself there.
Oh, that one.
If you're backing out of that one and you've got to back
Quite a ways, yeah.
Back into your right.
But you're not entering, you're just backing.
Yes.
Yeah.
You can back into it.
And you got to clear the car that's behind you to be able to get heading out in the direction you're supposed to go. So that is a little bit of a challenging parking space. Anyway, I'm sure that the layout of the parking lots, parking spaces are something you could figure out. But I do agree with Mike. I didn't pay attention to that before. I think that would be a little bit of a toughie to back out of if I'm driving my F-150. Other comments or questions, Mike?
No.
Okay. So I don't know if it's helpful to summarize what I think I'm getting from the board. It seems like several people could buy into the idea of the curb cut, especially if the fire department supports it, and even more so if you can get Kyle on board. There may be other design options that are a little bit better. One or two board members might be adamantly opposed to it no matter what, but you probably would find enough support if you got the design in a workable state that the fire department liked. And again, even more so DPW did.
DPW, yeah.
Is there other feedback that you need to hear from us in terms of what to do with the curb cut between now and December? Or do you want us to actually be more specific about what we think you ought to get done?
Can I just ask, there was a concept discussed yesterday about pulling the right turn-in around onto Dobson Way rather than Camp Sergeant, so that you would make a horseshoe around the building? Is that an option that you're not considering at all?
So she's talking about...
Yeah, Jillian's discussing a concept we reviewed, which would delete this driveway, but provide this, move it to roughly this area.
Whoa.
And we'd have to reconfigure the park. We'd lose one or two spaces here. We'd be able to make them up back here. However, that has issues with, it's feasible from a design standpoint of getting a fire truck into that and to circulate it so it works geometrically. But it's going to present other, and this would be a private driveway where it's not a town. It would be non-waiver condition at this point. So we would, really, from what I think Kyle was saying, we would not need approval from the town to construct this driveway because it's a private drive. But it created some, it's a different situation with regards to...
Isn't that another curb cut on Dobson Way?
Dobson Way is a private road, so it doesn't, that's what he's saying. It's modifying a driveway instead of modifying a road. And I agree that that doesn't require approval as a curb cut, but it still requires planning board approval of your site plan.
And it's a bad place.
There's also that big monument sign that has been grandfathered for the Shaw's Plaza, which you would somehow have to drive around. I don't know how you would...
It would go by, yeah, roughly behind. It would be behind that sign, but it's not in ideal condition. But it would, those were the two options that we're pursuing, this Camp Sergeant drive, which we're proposing now with the alternate location.
Hadn't really thought about the alternate location. And I see the instincts of the board members, that people turning into the plaza and having someone immediately start to slow down to make a turn unexpectedly could cause some problems. And because of that, I'd prefer the Camp Sergeant Road entrance to the Dobson Way entrance. But that doesn't mean that more information or more designs or the opinion of people that have some sway with the board couldn't talk me out of that. It's just, I'm not in love with it. I do know that there's a few grocery stores and, you know, one of the Walmarts that I go to, where you encounter that, where you kind of turn in and there's a lane to turn off kind of right away and kind of find it off-putting. I want to drive up to the building before I start going across the parking lot. But I know that those exist, and that's kind of an approach that some take. What are your thoughts? Do you dislike, I mean, you didn't talk about that one until we kind of brought it up. Is it not your favorite? Or is it sort of...
Well, it's, from my standpoint, it's, it presents, it's the same issues with like, someone turning right into this property. There's going to be people turning onto that driveway. So you're going to be kind of steering, you're looking to accelerate, but then there's going to be cars braking to turn in, and trucks. So you're, it's kind of a funky flow that is probably worse off than we'd have in this situation.
See, if you're coming down Camp Sergeant Road, you're slowing down because there's a traffic light. If you're going through the light onto Dobson Way, you're accelerating because you've already gone through the light. So if there's going to be a possibility of a fender bender, it's more likely to happen on Dobson Way than it is on Camp Sergeant Road.
You also have more traffic through this area because there's multiple roads coming into that junction.
Well, let me just toss one thing. If you said that the, that access that you've just described is purely for the fire department, making all citizens in their little cars come in through the existing road thing on Dobson Way, and you close up the other, I think you've got the best of all worlds. Because I take your point, you don't want a, a normal access where you've just described it at the back of that, by that sign. But if that's the firing, fire department's access, it's wonderful. They could get their engine in there, and when given the lights and everything else, nobody's going to get in the way. And for the numbers of people that you've described that are likely to visit the bank, the average Joes, that Dobson Way entrance will work. So you've now got two entrances for fire trucks, one from coming, the South Fire Station, which will come in through Shaw's, and the Central Fire Station, which is going to swing around in there. Get rid of the cut on Camp Sergeant Road, and then you, I would be delighted.
Yeah, but you haven't solved the problem from the customer standpoint.
Yes, I have.
The customer's still got to go 360 around the building.
Well, I think you, a little bit of jiggering, you could make that work.
You also have the delivery vehicles, which need to, the delivery vehicle can't access the site from this driveway, like a full-size design FedEx truck. This dimension's too narrow.
How many full-size design FedEx tractor trailers do you have going on?
I'm referring to a...
Well, I'm talking about like a FedEx delivery truck, which is like a 30, 20 to 30 foot.
I could get a, I could get a 44 foot...
This is too narrow of a dimension to make this U-turn.
No, I could get a 44-foot vehicle in there.
So our software program modeled that SUV vehicle, it's a 30-foot SUV.
Hold your mic fun up a little bit better.
It cannot, it can't make a U-turn in this configuration. It can access the site and go around the site. But I need, I would like to have the second access to facilitate that FedEx truck type design vehicle so that it can get access in that direction, as well as for customers. So I understand your point about the fire access, and I do understand it, but we would like it to be a full-service or limited, full-service drive, or limited access, full-service. And that's just our standpoint.
All right. So you got enough feedback? Oh, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to say that for the few customers that do still go to the bank, and we do have them. There are still people that want to come and talk to somebody and give them a check and get cash back. It does happen. We do want a site that's convenient. Convenience is the number one thing. People are busy. They're doing things on their lunch hours. They're doing it on the way to work or on the way home from work. And the Camp Sergeant access, aside from the public safety issues, does give someone the opportunity to make a right turn in there and go directly into the drive-up lane without having to circle around the building. We are going to have pedestrian flow, obviously, in the parking lot. So to the extent that we can put people right into the drive-up lane to do their transaction and out again, I think has a lot of advantages. And I'm hoping that this site can be as convenient for those few customers that do still come to the bank as it can be. Thank you.
Can we get public, just open it up to the public?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in on the proposal? This is, the board's not interested in taking final action tonight, but we're glad to hear. And there will be another opportunity. I see heads shaking now from the only folks in the room. So with that, close the public hearing. We'll certainly have another one later. Do you need more information from us with respect to the driveway layout? Have you heard enough to feel like you got good marching orders? Is there any other aspect of your proposal that you need us to kind of deal with and address tonight?
What do you think of the building?
I think it looks good.
Beautiful.
I think it looks good. I think the light green color that was shown in the elevations is a little different than the more beige-ish colors from the walk-in clinics and things across the way. I know that that's probably part of your trade dress to want to be in those colors.
Other side, turn it around, sir.
Turn the whole thing around. There you go.
Just turn the whole thing around.
Or is it the other one that's on the floor?
Oh, it's the other one over there.
Is that green or is it yellow? Because in some of the pictures, it looks...
The building itself is yellow. That's a hardy plank yellow. All of our branches that we have in our bank are all the same yellow color. So there's a hardy plank with a, some sort of stone base. It's still to be determined. We just changed our logo colors and the logo itself and our tagline maybe three months ago. And those were, the purple stayed, but our green is a little different. And we're using some of the reveals around the tower now to highlight some of the purple. And that is our intended design.
Just as a matter of interest, where are you putting the AC pack?
I'm sorry, where are we putting what?
Air conditioning pack. Where is it?
There's a spot.
It's just going to be on the, yeah, okay. It's just something we love not seeing it stuck up on the roof. That's what I'm saying.
It'll be hidden.
That's what I like.
I like that you got a peaked roof on that. The tower is a little bit of a different design than the towers on the walk-in clinic and across the way, but you're not necessarily so close to them that you have to model after them. And I think it's a smart-looking building, I think.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Thank you.
Nelson?
Could I just raise a couple of questions about landscaping, because we haven't talked about that?
Okay.
And I looked at the landscaping plan that's submitted, and it looked like most of the landscaping on this plan is grass. And it looks like an opportunity for landscaping along Camp Sergeant Road that seems to be missed. At least there's nothing identified there. Any reason for that, or...
No, only because they haven't been fully developed, they haven't been fully developed yet.
Yeah.
But we really want to make that a very attractive area landscaping-wise. And so although the town's right-of-way has that stretch, we would be looking to maintain that for the town.
Do something to make it look good, yeah.
And it'd be a lot easier for us and an expense, and, you know, that you, the town would not have to incur. And this way, we could really manage that, really make it attractive.
I'd like to see that, yeah.
Maybe some trees.
Can I add? I'm sorry.
I was just saying, maybe add some trees to that. It's all, it seems to be all kind of short shrub, short shrubs and plants. Yeah.
We want to make sure that people can see the building and they know we're there. So we want to be careful about visibility. But Mr. Millen's brought up a point of security, and one of the things we added recently was a fence along the backside here.
Oh, great.
And the reason for that is we're concerned about our employees when they leave at night, especially this time of year when it gets dark at 4:30. And so we're going to use our camera systems so that they can look outside and see at night before they leave. But we also want there to be a barrier of some sort so that somebody can't be walking through there or coming through there as best we can. So that's another security issue that we've addressed.
Wonderful.
And we're really allocating these spaces for employee, for staffs.
And you'll obviously have good lighting so that they can walk out there safely.
Absolutely.
That's all I was, I just was worried about security.
We worry about it, Bill.
I'm sure you do. You're more worried than I am. But I, I just wanted to know you, you'd worry about it.
So a couple of things to mention. I agree with the sentiment that the area along Camp Sergeant Road that looks like a wide grass area, the more that can be landscaped, the better, and to make it attractive. But I think that may also be predominantly what you've got available to use for snow storage. I don't think that you've got a whole lot more else anywhere else on the site than there. So you may have to have taller trees that can withstand snow piles around them. The other thing that I wanted to mention, and it kind of goes along with the security plan. I know you have a lighting plan sheet, L1, in the things that you supplied. Because you've got parking lot, active parking lot so close to the boundaries on this, you're going to struggle to keep enough light in your parking lot without spilling over your boundaries and making sure that you don't light off of your site, which is one of the requirements that we have, that you don't shed light across onto somebody else's property. I think your property line probably goes to the middle of Dobson Way, so you've got a little bit of a buffer there. But towards the gas station, even though the gas station's lighting the heck out of its side of the line. Yeah, they'll all blend together. There are some limitations. I don't know how technical or how difficult they will be to meet, but we do have some limitations on spillover from your site onto other sites with your lighting. But you also have minimum lighting within the area for security, enough to make your cameras work so that the pictures are worth looking at if you need them.
Definitely not.
And all of that. So another thing to think of.
What page? Yeah, it's page L1.
It's kind of three or four from the back.
Okay, I knew I saw it somewhere.
It's past 18 by 1.
We need to look at that and see, depending on the Camp Sergeant driveway and how that goes. And I got to review the regulation myself that the town has. But we want to have light in that driveway. And if the location of the right-of-way would maybe necessitate a waiver, if it's a .1 or something like that, that we need to meet.
And we've been able to consider waivers on those kinds of things in the past when they make sense. So we're not, you know, pretty obnoxious with those things. But downcast lighting, low-level light, you know, low fixtures so that they're shining down onto the pavement and away from the road and all of those sorts of things.
And the shielded lighting as well, which they had used up in the mall.
These full cutoff LEDs.
Yeah.
And this isn't a lead site, so we're not going to do lead with lighting, but this is what we're proposing.
You may encounter some funky things in our regulations where it talks about contrast ratio and those kinds of things where you didn't want a bright area right close to a dark area because of different reasons in a big parking lot. It may make perfect sense that that's the situation you end up with as you approach a fence. And so, you know, feel free to ask for the waiver, and if it makes sense, we're not going to give you a hard time for that. not going to give you a hard time for that.
Okay, thank you.
What kind of a fence is propo, oh, excuse me. What kind of a fence is proposed along the barry, along the edge of the property where it butts to the detention basin? Is there a fence there on your side?
Yeah, there is a, so this whole wall system will be a, like a shea block wall. It's only two to three feet high with a, like a, it's going to be a standard W-beam rail.
Standard what kind of rail?
A W-beam guard rail, like you see on the side of the highway.
Oh, yeah.
The O-N-C-O.
Oh, yeah.
And it's going to be bolted, but they'll make an anchor plate, so you will bolt the post into the wall itself, because you can't drive the posts, and we didn't want to encroach further, so it'll look like a...
It'll look like a highway edge, the edge of a highway.
Yeah.
It's going to be on top of a rock wall?
Yes, with a curb. So this is a, like a shea wall type wall, modular.
So what's the purpose of the guard rail if you've already got a, a wall that's going to stop the cars from going into your detention pond? Why put a guard rail on top of it?
Well, the wall is, is a, it's a, it's a fill, yeah, it's a fill condition, so the wall, the pond is three to four feet above you.
Oh, the wall's down. I got you. I'm sorry, I got the sense that the wall was higher than the parking lot, not lower.
I didn't explain it, no.
Two or three feet above the parking lot.
Okay. So I understand now.
I don't think I mentioned this earlier, but we are not purchasing this parcel. This is a, a ground lease. The property belongs to the owners of the shopping center. And therefore, we will reach out to the owner of the golf station to see if there's something, but we don't know if the owners of the shopping center would allow that.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, no question.
We will discuss it with them.
Yeah.
And if they don't have any objections, then we'll, we'll reach out to the owner of the, of the, of the golf station.
Understand completely. If you come back in December and say we ran it up the flagpole and it got all shot full of holes, it is what it is, but at least you tried, so I get it. Other comments or questions? If you don't need anything else from us, I think we'd be up to the point where we would consider tabling this till December 6th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion...
Is that enough time for you to accomplish what you need to accomplish?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, in that case, we'd let it, I'd like to make a motion. We table this matter till December the 6th at seven o'clock in this room with no further notification to a butters.
I'm only looking this way, Vinnie. I'm not looking the other way. You're not going to second it?
Desiree seconded it a minute ago.
I know, but Desiree missed, and Vinnie missed his chance.
Does it have to be seven o'clock? We don't count to him.
There it is.
Well, we, that's what we always say.
All in favor of, of hearing this matter, continuing it till December 6th in this room at the seven o'clock time, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. Thank you, guys, for a real in-depth explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you don't take away from it that we're being tough with some of the details. We just got a lot of questions about it as you go forward, and we want the departments that support us to understand and support the project. But overall, one of the things that we always end with when we give final approval is the welcome to Merrimack, so I hope you get that far and we get a chance to say that to you.
We want everybody to be happy as best we can accomplish that, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, please.
I apologize, I meant to bring this up earlier. The Conservation Commission apparently had some concerns or some issues they wanted to bring up as far as landscaping and fertilizers and stuff like that. Are you comfortable with the situation as it stands from them, their comments? Or is that something else we're going to be discussing on the 16th?
Well, the comments were, were, were under consideration at this point, as far as I'm concerned, and, but they were really, they wanted to have native plants, which I think we're all fine with. We can use recommended species, native plants. They wanted to restrict the fertilizer use, and in the letter I read no phosphorus, slow release. I wanted to research that with our landscape architects to make sure that, and then they wanted some testing, which I don't know if it's necessary or not, and I wanted to run that up the flagpole to see how we'd respond to that recommendation, but for the most part.
So the, the no or low phosphorus and slow-release fertilizer is a, is a limitation that they recommend to us on virtually every proposal, and it's one that's pretty well adopted, so I don't think that you'll have trouble finding a landscaper who can do that for you. And then the testing thing is just to find out that you need fertilizer before you apply it, because if you don't need it, then don't apply it, and it won't run off, and we don't have to deal with fertilizers within the effects of that. So those are what those things are about. Other, I, I understand you want to look up the flagpole for you, sort of commit to them, and that's the right thing to do. Other applicants haven't found it to be monumental to deal with that. Usually, the one that people get hung up on, and I don't, I don't know if they proposed this for you guys, was the no-salt use. And did they propose that for you?
Yes.
They proposed the Green Snow Pro.
Yes.
Yes. So I don't know how much you know about the, the Green Snow Pro, but it's, it uses less salt, and I guess they're saying no salt is what they recommend, but the Green Snow Pro thing is worth exploring from UNH because if you comply with it, the statute that adopted that program gives you a liability waiver for ice and salt and snow-related accidents and injuries if you're complying with the Green Snow Pro thing. So it's way worth it. It's a great thing to do just for that reason, so that you've got that bit ahead of you, aside from the fact that you can advertise that you're environmentally friendly and green and all that good stuff.
You know, like there was a bunch of applicators, from my limited research, there was a lot of applicators in the area in Merrimack, so it's...
There are.
There's a lot of licensed applicators available.
And I think, I don't know if we should take credit for that or not, but we've required many, many applicants in recent years to investigate or to commit to using their services, so that's probably why so many of our landscapers have gone out and got that training, because a lot of the commercial sites, it's just, it's just something that we've asked them to do.
They must send you Christmas cards, too.
Well, we're not trying to help everybody with their business in that way, but our town has got a lot of water with sodium, a lot of problems with sodium and chloride in the water wells, and there's just not a good solution to what you do about that if it becomes above certain threshold levels where you, you don't want to drink the water. So cutting down on that road salt, which is the primary source of that stuff, is really what that's all about.
And as I'm sure you know, we've got enough problems with water one way or another in this town already.
Understood.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. I look forward to seeing you again in December.
Thanks for your direction.
Thank you. Item five on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern, and the one that I have is an announcement that the Cubs are winning seven to nothing.
You're joking.
They're winning seven to nothing. Yeah.
Well, that's an, that's very important.
It is a very important announcement. This is game six, so they need to win this one to get to a game seven.
Yeah.
And see where that goes.
That'll be the deciding game.
This is, won't be deciding, but seven would be.
Seven, that's what I mean. Seven will be the deciding game, then.
If they lose this one, then this is the deciding game. So anyway, with that, does anybody have any planning board-related items? Seeing none, that brings us to the approval of the minutes of October 4th, 2016.
And we...
How are you doing?
We have October 18th as well.
October eight, oh, we got two sets of minutes in here?
Yes, we should.
Let's deal with October 4th first. What's the will of the board?
October 4th, okay.
I approve as written.
Motion to approve as written, seconded by, oh, I thought you had heard you seconded over here. Alistair's going to take the second on that. Any discussion on October 4th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one comment on page five.
Gentlemen, could you, gentlemen, gentlemen, could you quietly leave because we have further business?
We just got to encourage you to go along so we can work. Thank you, guys. Don't mean to... Okay, Nelson, what do you got on October 4th?
Okay, the, I just want to point out something. On page five, line 15, this is regarding the, the site up at the north end where Chairman Best requested, when working, worked out with staff, that it be distributed to the members of the board in a packet, perhaps for information purposes only. This is the, the gravel pit area that I brought up the issue when we were talking with them. You know, they, they, you know, they never showed us what they were going to do in there with that gravel pit and dump of material and stumps and all of that. And they said they would do something about it, and you said it would be worked out by the staff regarding remediation, the proposed open space lot to be, down in item number six, on line 52, it says, "The applicant shall address and modify the plan as necessary regarding remediation in the proposed open space lot to the satisfaction of town staff." So one says to, that the planning board will get a look at it, and the other is that the staff will sat, be satisfied with it. So I guess, I'm not really sure...
Where are we standing?
Where we are with that, yeah.
Okay. So up in the paragraph, starting up at 11, it says, "Mr. Disco suggested there be some notes covering the intent for the area. Mr. Clinton stated an appropriate solution could be reached with staff. He suggested some level of loam and wild mix would be drastically appropriate. He stated he would commit to making a note on the plan of what is believed should be the final disposition of the reigning form of gravel pit area." And then that's where the sentence is that you picked up on Chairman Best. So what I understood was going to happen is that the staff and, and the applicant were going to work out what to be done, but that we were going to get a look at it.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for decision-making purposes, but that we would get a look at it. So I don't know that that actually needs to be a condition of approval, that we get a look at it, as much as the staff was going to bring it by in a meeting and include it either in the beginning or the end of the meeting.
It does go on to note, perhaps for informational purposes only, so I would say that the condition is fulfilled when they meet town's satisfaction on that, and then we can provide whatever it is.
To the board.
To the board.
Will that be okay?
That'd be okay. I just wanted it clear.
Yes, do we, do we need to change any wording in here to do that?
I don't think so. As long as we all understand that that's...
That's what's going to happen.
The process that we're going to follow.
Okay. So I, the only thing that I want to think through as we're looking at that is what sort of trigger or reminder we could put in place to make sure that that actually, we follow through on that. And I don't know, Julian, do you have any suggestions about that?
I mean, when the plan's signed, it could certainly be something that, you know, the condition's been fulfilled.
So Alistair and I have to remember this, then.
Have to remember it, okay.
I promise to do that.
Alistair promises to remember it.
Alistair's on it.
Okay. Back to the minutes. Are there any other changes to the minutes or edits?
I was just noting that that motion that was made there at line 29 of page five doesn't have any vote recorded.
Really? Did we vote on that?
It's just not recorded, maybe, but there's...
Followed down and then goes to number four, discussion and possible action regarding
other items of concern.
All right, so that should reflect the motion numbers.
Motion was made and seconded, but it wasn't voted on.
What page are you on?
Page five. There's no voting. I'm just seeing if it followed any later on.
No, it goes all the way through till item four. Good catch, Tom.
Yeah, by number nine, and then...
Yep, okay. So Julian, can we do whatever it takes to review the recording and capture that?
Yes, certainly.
Line, is I know? And if we did, if we didn't vote on it...
We did, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm sure we did. Because you guys stopped me all the time.
We wouldn't have let you get away with that one.
Okay. Anything else with these minutes? All in favor of approving, I'm subject to those edits, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero one with Mr. Russo abstaining. Let's take up the minutes of Tuesday, October 18th. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept the minutes as printed.
Motion to accept them as printed. Is there a second?
I'll second, but I have a comment on page five.
Second by Nelson. Now, Tom, you got me checking for votes on all of these. Nelson, what's your comment on page five?
Okay, on page five, line five, Nelson Disco informed the board that on October 13th,